Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you. The hour is seven o'clock, and as Mayor, I hereby call to order this meeting of the Laconia City Council scheduled for November 25, 2019, at this hour. We'll begin our meeting tonight with a salute to our American flag. I'd ask that you please rise and join Counselor David Bowens in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. For the record, we will note that the minutes to tonight's meeting are being kept by City Clerk Cheryl Hebert, and at this time I'd ask that she please call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Here.
Counselor Bowens?
Here.
Counselor Littman?
Present.
Counselor Haynes?
Here.
Counselor Hamel?
Present.
Counselor Hosmer?
Here.
Mayor Engler?
Present.
Let the record show that all six members of the council are either here or present tonight, and that a quorum has been established for this meeting. Also, we'll note for the record that the council is joined at the front table tonight by our city manager Scott Myers and by our city finance director Glenn Smith. Our first order of regular business tonight is acceptance of minutes. Counselors, before you tonight, you have the minutes to our last meeting on November 12th. Those meetings were circulated by the clerk on November 15th, and at this point, no changes have been suggested, so unless there are any at this point, I'm going to declare the minutes to our meeting of November 12th to be accepted by the council as submitted by the clerk. We have no consent in action items tonight, so we're going to get right to citizens' comments for matters not on the agenda. This is the appropriate time in our meeting tonight to hear from anyone here tonight who wishes to address the council on any matter that is not on tonight's agenda. I'm presuming that many of you are here tonight to address, or at least listen to, several items that are on the agenda, not the least of which is the Wild Trail extension issue, the short-term rental issue, and the creation of historic district issue. So if you wish to address those three topics, or anything else that's on the agenda tonight, now is not the time to ask for the microphone. We will get to that a little later in the meeting. It shouldn't be too long. So is there anyone tonight here who wishes to address an issue that is not on tonight's agenda? No? Okay. That will speed things along. We have no nominations, elections, public hearings tonight, no presentations, so we're all the way down to item 15, the mayor's report, already. Several things to mention tonight, the first of which is to alert everyone, or remind everyone, that Celebrate Laconia's annual Christmas kickoff celebration is scheduled for this coming Sunday from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. in Stewart and Rotary Park on either side of the river in downtown Laconia. And the parade itself, that's from 1:00 to 6:00, the parade itself will start at Opechee Park this year, going north to south, as opposed to the traditional south to north, start at Opechee Park and end at Stewart Park, where the city's Christmas tree is located this year in Stewart Park. And Santa will be there at the end of the parade to light the Christmas tree for us after the parade, that again, that starts at 4:30 at Opechee Park. The second thing I'd like to mention is another thing that will happen before our next meeting on December 9th is the annual Christmas Village Extravaganza at the Laconia Community Center. Counselor Hamel and other elves have been busy the last week or two already getting together for the children of our community. And the dates this year for Christmas Village, I believe, Counselor, correct me if I'm wrong, are December Thursday, December 5 through Sunday, December 8.
That's correct.
And the grand opening is at 6:00 p.m. on Thursday evening, the 5th.
Correct.
Okay, so we all look forward to that, as we always do. The other thing I'd like to mention tonight, under Mayor's report, is I know that from the amount of email that has been transferred to members of the city council on the issue of the Wild Trail has been extraordinary over the past few days. And I know that a number of you, I presume that a number of you that are here tonight are here to address that issue later, or at least listen to the debate on that later on tonight. And so I'm going to use the mayor's report, if I can, from a personal privilege standpoint here, to address a couple of things. I have read as many of these letters as I can. I think I've read them all, but I perhaps missed one or two. And have also reviewed the hundreds of postings on social media, on the newspaper website, and on the railroad, the Hobo Railroad's website. So I have some familiarity, as the rest of the councilors do, with the arguments that are being made, largely in support of the railroad operation itself. And so before we get to, in a few minutes here, to public comment, I would like to make a couple of statements about what I've read online. My hope here is that I can head some of the comments that might be made tonight off at the pass as a matter of fact. The first thing I'd like to mention is that contrary to much of what I have read online over the last few days in the letters, the city council tonight is not considering any measure that would pull up the railroad tracks in the city of Laconia. That is totally false and erroneous. For starters, the city of Laconia has no jurisdiction whatever over the railroad tracks, none. We couldn't do anything with those railroad tracks even if we wanted to. Okay? That's a matter of fact. So there's not going to be any proposal tonight, any vote tonight, for the city to consider pulling up the railroad tracks within the city of Laconia. So please keep that in mind when you rise to speak. What we do have before us tonight is a resolution. I hope everyone has read that resolution. If not, I have a copy here that I'd be happy to have the clerk pass around, so that those of you who have interest in what the council is actually going to be considering later tonight, you can do so. The resolution itself, in its conclusion, simply says that the city council, if it passes, would work cooperatively with representatives of neighboring communities, namely Meredith, Belmont, Tilton, Northfield, and Franklin. Those are the affected communities. Would work cooperatively with representatives of neighboring communities, all of whom contributed money to the ALTA group study that was completed, to study what actions may be necessary to gain state and federal approval for the rail-to-trail project. That's the action that's being requested of the city council tonight. So we have facts here in terms of what's being asked. The city council is being asked to cooperatively join with representatives of neighboring communities to study what actions might be necessary to gain state and federal approval for the rail-to-trail project. The actual railroad corridor, I hope everyone knows this, as I said, has nothing to do with the city of Laconia. The actual state of, the actual railroad corridor is owned by the state of New Hampshire. It's not owned by the city of Laconia. It's not owned by the Hobo Railroad. It's not owned by any of the abudders who are currently traversing across it to reach other property, or whatever. It's not owned by Southdown. It's not owned by Long Bay. It's owned by the people of New Hampshire. So who speaks for the people of New Hampshire? Well, we all know from Civics 101, the easy answer to that question, and that is that the elected governor and the elected general court/legislature speaks for the people of New Hampshire. That is who determines this policy. Now, we're also under the understanding that there's a federal role in this as well, and that's what this resolution calls for, is to investigate just exactly what the federal role is, and form an evaluation as to how difficult a hurdle that might be to overcome. Okay? The second thing I want to mention is on the snowmobile front. There's a lot of posts online and letters to the city council addressing the snowmobile issue, and that the city is somehow trying to restrict, or the action the city might take down the road somewhere, if it were possible, would somehow curtail snowmobile activity in Laconia, or in the corridor. And what I want to say tonight, as a matter of fact, that's in the ALTA group report, is that the proposal that came out of the ALTA group report is for a trail from Lakeport to Weir's Beach that would be made out of crushed rock, not paved. There's no pavement plan for the so-called Phase III of the Wild Trail. Now, by using crushed rocks, similar to the prep path in Wolfboro, if anybody is familiar with that, that surface would be suitable for walking and biking, but it would also mean that it could be used in the winter for snowmobile traffic. In fact, it would enhance snowmobile traffic, because right now, we need and require a certain amount of snowfall to be able to cover the rails and trail, the, what do you call them? The rails themselves and the, what's the word I'm looking for?
Ties.
Ties, thank you. And so if that was simply a crushed rock surface, it would take much less snow and extend the season for snowmobilers. But I just want to make that sure, if any of you are here tonight to argue on behalf of the snowmobile community, that the belief in this study is that a crushed rock surface there, instead of the railroad tracks, would greatly significantly enhance the snowmobile experience in the Lakes region, not detract from it. With that, I will stop, and we have a little bit more business to cover, and very shortly we're going to get to citizens' comments again. All right, ladies and gentlemen, and members of council, we are on to committee reports. Do we have any committee business to discuss tonight? No? How about liaison reports? Any liaison reports tonight? No one? Okay, we're all the way down to number 18 tonight, and that is citizens' request to comment on current agenda items. So I would be happy to recognize anyone who wishes to step forward and address the council on a matter that is on tonight's agenda. I would ask that, given the number of people that are here tonight, that you be cognizant of the time, and try to keep your comments as brief as possible, certainly not more than, say, three minutes, so that we can get everybody involved who might want to speak. And also, when you come to the microphone, all of you, please, for our records, identify who you are and where you live. Sir, you're first up.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Chris Swinierski. I'm an attorney for the Hobo Railroad. I live in Bedford, New Hampshire. I wanted to point out that we think moving forward with any type of Wild Trail support that is based on the ALTA study, as referenced in the resolution, is incredibly premature at this point. The reason for that is that the ALTA study fails to examine or address larger impacts that are outside of Belknap County and outside the state of New Hampshire, when rail matters very specifically, and I think as a matter of common sense, people can understand rail matters do impact a larger region than Belknap County. And that is, in fact, the reason, as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, that the Federal Surface Transportation Board has exclusive jurisdiction over the abandonment of any rail lines. To date, after doing some research, I was not able to find a single instance where the STB ever approved discontinuance of an active rail. So I think, again, it's a little bit premature to be going down that path when so much of the information you will need to evaluate that is lacking from the ALTA report that you have before you. Additionally, as I'm sure you're aware, the plan to remove rail for trail is in direct conflict with state law. As we know, in this state, if we are going to use rails for trails, it can only be done with the permission of the Department of Transportation, and only if the reversion to rail use can be done at a minimal cost. I think it's probably a matter of common sense as well, that if we take up the rails, we cannot replace the rails at a minimal cost. So in essence, what we're doing is we're talking about moving forward based on a study, and moving forward against federal and state law, and that, to me, doesn't seem like it makes sense. We do have a lot of members from the rail industry here who can also give you some factual data as to job impacts and other economic impacts that the ALTA study failed to consider, and in the interest of keeping it brief, because I know there are a lot of people here, I'll give up the microphone to any who want to speak on those points.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't be shy. Who's next?
I'll be next. Good evening. My name is Benjamin Clark, and I am the president of the Plumbeth and Lincoln Railroad, where the operators of the Hobo and Winnipesaukee Scenic Railroad, where a small, women-owned, family business that's operated portions of the state-owned Concord to Lincoln line for nearly 35 years. Now, I stand here before you all this evening, asking for you to vote in opposition to a proposal that could eventually eliminate the only active railroad line in central New Hampshire, and put our company out of business, and result in the elimination of nearly 70 railroad-related jobs. And many of those employees are actually standing in the crowd tonight. Thank you all for coming and for your support. Tonight, the city council is being asked to support a possible outcome that violates both state and federal laws, and this, to me, is a completely wrong approach. In addition, the ALTA planning study that you're heavily relying upon has information that significantly is limited due to its scope. For instance, on page 42 of the ALTA report, railroad revenues and passenger counts out of Weir's Beach Station during 2016 and 2017 are reported as zero, as if trains never ran. How can the city properly evaluate the railroad's importance and economic impact when the usage numbers out of Weir's Beach specifically are so obviously flawed, and when the impacts of the ALTA report are focused exclusively on Belknap County and not the entire region or state? Now, earlier this year, there was a group out of Warren, Pennsylvania, Stone Consulting and Design, that did their own independent analysis of what our railroad operation means to this region, and they determined that right now, currently, the Hobo and Winnipesaukee Scenic Railroad provide an overall impact to the area of more than $17.4 million annually. That what we do, what we're doing now, creates 380 equivalent full-time jobs, and that's as a result of our railroad operations. That 61% of the railroad's guests, they come from outside of New Hampshire, and that results in $8.8 million in additional visitor spending while traveling. 44% of the railroad's guests will incorporate an overnight stay as part of their trip, which results in $4.4 million of economic benefit to the local lodging community. Now, the list goes on and on. Over the years, the railroad has made countless donations to nonprofit and community-based groups. Last year, there were 64 organizations that we supported directly. We had last year 68 full and part-time employees working on our rails, and since we started running our trains, 2.1 million passengers have ridden aboard. Each year, our organization pays in the form of a user fee to the state of New Hampshire, over $100,000 typically, for the opportunity to use those rails, and then a portion of that money comes back to the municipalities each and every year. And this funding, along with the railroad's own maintenance, actually contributes to help preserving rail service over 55.2 miles through central New Hampshire. So in short, I'm asking, please, pump the brakes on this measure. It could have long and detrimental consequences. Removal of the rails would be shortsighted. Removal of the rails would be doing the wrong thing. Now, if the Wild Trail is worth doing, to me, it ought to be doing, it ought to be worth doing right. This is something that we shouldn't try and do on the cheap. It shouldn't be done at the expense of the operating railroads. It shouldn't be done at the expense of the various rail-dependent shippers, of which there are many, and it shouldn't be done at the objection of the abutting property owners. So please, let's find a way to compromise, find a way to work together, and save the rails before making any drastic decisions. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor and city council and guests, it's a hard act to follow. Benjamin handles the passenger tourist part of the operation.
I handle the freight, and it's something that, starting in 1982, we had five customers here in Laconia.
Could you identify yourself, sir?
I'm sorry. Peter Dearnish, the owner-manager, New England Southern Railroad, live in Gofftown, New Hampshire. When we started in 1982, there were five customers here in Laconia. They're no longer any rail users, but in 1985, I with another gentleman started the Winnipesaukee Scenic, because what we were seeing in this area was the future to this area was not freight, but passenger tourism. That's been very successful. My concern is along the same lines as Ben. I participated in the questioning on the ALTA study, and found that a lot of the things that we discussed didn't get noted and so forth. We don't have any strong objections. If they want to build a trail, that's fine, but recognize that there's just no way that it would make any real sense, financially or otherwise, to use this and take up the track. So with that said, I'll leave it to other people, maybe to get into detail, but I'm glad what the mayor said is important, but when the study is finally put before us, we want to see it in more detail than the last time, because the freight part of it was not covered at all. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Swark, and I live in Center Conway, New Hampshire, and I'm president, general manager--
Can you get closer to the mic, please?
Oh, hello.
You can pull it up if you--
Certainly. So anyways, my name is David Swark, and I live in Center Conway, New Hampshire, and I'm president, general manager, and owner of the Conway Scenic Railroad. Now, I'm here before you today, yes, I'm a competitor of this railroad, so there might be some short-term gain if this railroad disappeared, but I wanted to share with you 30 years of rail transportation experience, which I think might shed some different light on this whole subject matter. The first thing is the rail passenger aspect of this. Now, what I've noted is that we have guests which come from all over the world to visit the state of New Hampshire, but when they visit, they are rail enthusiasts, they like railroads, they actually will go on the Conway Scenic, they'll go on the Cog, and they'll go on the Hobo and Winnipesaukee. So by having these three attractions in this state, we all work together collaboratively to go ahead and bring more economic development opportunities into the state. When you think about it, these rail lines are truly economic development engines for all the communities that we serve. When you step back a moment, and you look at that, this is actually an attraction. We all belong to the New Hampshire Attractions Association. As an attraction, people pay a reasonable amount of money for a ticket for that experience. It's kind of like when you think about the Mount Washington. If the Mount Washington was removed off the lake, and you replaced it with people's ability to paddle themselves along the lake, yes, they can achieve the same goal of going from one point to the other point, but there's no economic incentive to anybody, it's just they're doing this on their own. So the trail is a very similar thing, where there's no real direct connection to an economic development engine that you have today. The other thing I want to share with you is 30 years of my career was in rail freight, industrial development. And my own hometown, where I grew up, which was Palmer, Massachusetts, a long time ago recognized that they wanted to build an industrial park. So as part of the industrial park, they had a railroad focus, and I'll tell you right now, I would be happy to take anyone here down to visit this industrial park. My life living there, that industrial park is the largest taxpayer in the town of Palmer, that one industrial park. And what it does is it takes advantage of something that's very unique about rail transportation. Every railroad car has two and a half truckloads of material in it, so you have a very small impact as far as the amount of fuel that you burn to move that freight, and very low impact on the highway system, because you're taking so many trucks off the road when you have a rail-served industrial park. So on that note, I really appreciate your time this evening, and I would encourage you to look at the alternatives of rail freight transportation, and also look at what you have today, which is a railroad that's an economic development engine for your community, as well as all the others that it serves. Thank you.
I take it we're going to, oh, Charlie St. Clair, thank you. Usually you make the announcements.
The Honorable. Nice tie.
Thank you, thank you both.
And you live in Laconia, sir?
Yes, I do live in Laconia. But I take it we're going to separate the items? So I want to talk about two things on the agenda, but we're going to separate it, right? We're not going to mix them all up.
You want to talk about two different things?
Yeah, but I'd rather, if we're concentrating on the Wild Trail right now, I'd rather just talk about that.
So you want to come back again, is that what you're saying?
I do, yes. I reserve that right, if I may. Thank you.
Only for you, representative.
Thank you. My comment is, I'm glad to see the city council is taking the initiative to work on resolutions. I think that's great. I think we need more resolutions going down to Concord, quite frankly. And that being said, the resolution I'd like to see you guys talk about is encouraging the state to bring passenger service back to this area. And I know it's going to take time, and I think if we get a different governor, we'll probably have that, a good chance of that happening. I don't know if any of you have ridden on the Down Easter, but for over 40 years, there was no passenger service, I'm pretty sure I'm right on that, on that amount of time. Forty years without passenger service between Boston and Portland, Maine. It's, and the union leader and others in this state called it a boondoggle when they talked about the Down East, they said, "It's a waste of time, nobody's going to ride it." It's actually been a very successful, very successful thing. They have five train sets now a day. If you don't make your reservations, sometimes you can't get on the train. And I know I take it a lot, because I despise 93, as most of you know. And if any of you would like to ride on the Down Easter, I'll be happy to pick up the fare, either to Portland, that's right, you heard me right, Counselor. Either to Boston or Maine. But go to Dover, talk to people in Dover. I know our city manager is very familiar with Dover, and I know several other people in the city are very familiar with Dover. And look what that service has done to Dover, Rochester, Exeter. It has actually caused a lot more development, right down the road from the station in Dover, there's a huge development going on there, and it's been driven by the fact that they have passenger service. So I'm thinking about the future, I'm not thinking about today, but I would love to see a resolution from this council to do that, to Concord, to encourage that. And I suspect that the other communities that you've mentioned tonight would probably support such a resolution. The other thing is that the Wild Trail has been a great addition to the city, to our parks, there's no doubt about that. And if it turns out that it can't work with railroad, or perhaps the neighborhood's up going along that side of Pogus Bay, I might add that the other side of Pogus Bay is also a very beautiful area. And perhaps where we need a sidewalk so badly along the boulevard, because as most of you know, it gets put in in bits and pieces as somebody wants to develop their property there, and as you all know, in the summertime, it's a safety hazard, because there is no sidewalk. So maybe, I'm just thinking out of the box, maybe we could do something there to incorporate both on that side of the lake, or the bay. It is, it's a beautiful area, but I'm just thinking out of the box on that, so, thank you.
My name is Rick Cifori of Auburn, New Hampshire. I have a couple of points I'd like to bring up, which aren't mentioned often when it comes to the trail proposal, especially having to do with the study, which was recently carried out by ALTA. One of the things that's very important about this railroad line, and has always been very important about this railroad line, is the direct connection with the national-- important about this railroad line, is the direct connection with the national rail network at Concord. Something that cannot be emphasized enough is that for a tourist railroad to have a direct connection to receive equipment and also to ship equipment as well is an extremely important part of that operation. A recent point that was outlined in both newspaper articles and the Alta study as well is that the COG Railway, which is an isolated tourist railroad, should somehow be held to the same standard as this railroad here because they're both tourist railroads. Well, a quick look into the history would reveal that the COG Railroad is and always has been built to a different specification than any other standard railroad in the country. Therefore, they have no need for a direct connection. So why would that comparison be directly made when referring to this railroad here in the Lakes Region? Not only that, but the Hobo Railroad does quite a bit of contract work in Lincoln for entities, private and public as well, including the Massachusetts Bay Transit Authority, the MBTA. Over the years, they've done quite a bit of contract work. So eliminating that connection, that direct connection, would eliminate that work and would also incur the railroad unnecessary transport fees over the highway rather than directly by rail, something that's not being talked about enough. That would also have an environmental impact as well. So these sort of things are not being highlighted, they're not being understood. There's a gross generalization of railroad infrastructure and operations when it comes to the reality of operating railroads here in New Hampshire and elsewhere. So these things have to be considered when talking about removing active railroad infrastructure for recreational trail purposes. These are things that are real, they're researchable, you can look them up, and it is extremely easy to find that information. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Dick Bordwell. I'm the president of the Long Bay Association, and I work in concert with our sister association, Southdown Shores. We represent 5,200 feet of shoreline developed over the last 35 years. During that time, the railroad has always been part of our neighborhood. It's actually been a great coexistence. And I'm here to talk, we were originally going to talk about something entirely different, and we were very happy to hear that we're not gonna be talking about closing down the rail lines today. We all got that misconception by the article that appeared in the Daily Sun this past weekend, and we're glad that it's wrong. Not seen it be wrong in the past, but I'm glad to hear that it is today. But I'm here to talk about the fact that the conception probably here in this room is that Long Bay and Southdown are against the WOW Trail. And I'm here to tell you that's not the case. We are against the current proposed location for the WOW Trail, and our sole reason for that is safety. And I want to talk to you a little bit about safety so you understand the concern because we're not sure that anybody that would've walked it would've thought that this was a Of those 5,200 feet of shoreline, the railroad takes up the entire amount of space that we're talking about. It runs north and south. People wanting to get to where 80% of our amenities are have to go east-west. There's 670 homeowners with families and friends that come up on the weekend, and they're going to our beaches, our parks, our green space, our pools, our clubhouse, and they have to cross those tracks. We have five crossings from the State Department of Transportation that allows us to do that. Like I said, for 30 some-odd years, it's been a very good coexistence with the railroad. There has not been a single incident or accident where anybody has been injured. We don't believe that's going to be the case if we tried to put a trail through the same area. And the reason for that is we're talking about projections of 40,000 to 170,000 people using the same location, going in an opposite direction without stop, with 670 families, which usually you can multiply that by four, and figure out how many times they're crossing the tracks to get to our beaches and to picnic and to enjoy the area that they bought into. So we have been discussing and wanting to meet with the WOW org for some time now to talk about alternative locations. And we've spent our own money on plans with funding needs and locations that will allow the trail to go in places that we can support. And that's what we're here to talk about, is we want to work with the city. We want to see the WOW Trail get finished, not at the expense of the railroad and not at the expense of our owners. And we would look forward to the opportunity to start working with you as soon as possible. I also have one other subject that I'd like to talk about tonight, and I will wait for that proper time because it seems like there's probably a few more people that would like to address the group on the WOW Trail, and I'll let that happen, but we would like to come back and talk very briefly.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else want to talk about the WOW Trail at this point? Anyone else? Yes, sir. In the back. Somebody had their hand up there in the back.
Good evening. My name is Ray Spinoza. I live in Five Paradise Drive in Laconia. And just a couple of things about the WOW Trail. The WOW Trail started out sharing the right-of-way, and the rail-to-trail program was never based on an active railroad. It was an abandoned railroad that'd be changed into a trail. So that's changed from the initial WOW procedure to where you want to go today. The other thing is nobody looked at expanding the possibilities for that railroad. I look, I read a lot about what Laconia wants to do for the city. I read about the Opera House in Lakeport, the people that want to expand Lakeport. You have a beautiful railroad station in downtown Laconia, okay, but a train doesn't stop there. You have farmer markets that are at Laconia Center. In the summertime, if you extended that railroad to Lakeport, you have Opech, you have craft fairs in back of Opech, you could bring people from Meredith, from the Weers area, to downtown Laconia, to Lakeport, okay, and expand the possibilities for the whole area, tying it all together. You have some of the best places in New Hampshire to take advantage of, and I think the train could be part of that. You know, during Bike Week, for example, they used to run the train to Lakeport. You can run it to downtown Laconia, you have to look at what it would cost and what it would do. But bringing people to downtown Laconia may be a good thing for Laconia as well. The other thing is I think that rail gets close enough to Tilton, okay? One of the things people come up here and spend a lot of time at is the Tilton outlets. If there was a way, again, to bring the tourists from Meredith, from the Weers, on a train to go to Tilton, okay, and then back to where-- they're here for a week, they're here for a couple of weeks, they're looking for things to do. So has anybody looked at that side, rather than getting rid of it, trying to take better use of it? That's all I wanted to say.
All right, thank you.
My name is Pat Marku. I live in Landon Circle, Laconia. I'd like to remind the mayor of a memo that was provided last year from Patrick Hurley, Director of Aeronautics Rail and Transit specifying the legalities and the issues involving the rail system. I'd like to-- just hand copy that over.
Do you have a copy of my response to that letter, sir?
I don't know that I have a copy of the response to that letter, sir.
Should be part of the record also.
Okay. I would like to also say that prior to this meeting happening, that Mr. Hurley reached out again and sent an email to the office, again specifying that the removal of the active rail corridor is contrary to State RSA 22860A. So it leads me to be confused as to why, when we clearly have state and federal legislation that we're asking for this to be considered here at the city level.
So, thank you. If I could just add for your sake and for the other people here, since you referenced the letter from Mr. Hurley, is one of the points that I made in my response to him two years ago was that there's no one who's sitting around this table or involved in this, on the WOW Trail Board, or anyone who is under the illusion that current state law does not prohibit what was being talked about. Everyone knows that, okay? Point being that that law was not written by Moses or not written on a tablet that Moses brought down from Sinai. That law was written by men and women, and it can be changed by men and women. He is simply stating what the current law in the state of New Hampshire is, and we know that that's the current law.
Well, my concern lies in the current dialogue that exists in the Laconia Sun and in other places that make it appear like that these laws don't exist and that there are conditions--
That's uninformed dialogue then. No one at this table's under any misconception about what the law says.
Well, it still leads me to believe that it's not a proper thing for the city to take on as an amendment with--
Fair.
--taking up your time and taxpayers.
Fair enough. Anyone else on this subject? Last chance. Okay, let's change subjects then. How about short-term rental? Anyone here want to address that issue? No one? All right. Then the other issue is the historic-- oops, whoops. Yes.
Ruben Bassett. I no longer live in Laconia, but I own property and businesses here.
Can you move the mic up a little bit, Ruben?
Yeah.
Thank you.
There we go. Some of the, in regards to short-term rentals, it concerns me to think about adding unnecessary regulations to property owners, making it harder. You know, I understand that we do need some oversight. There's been some issues in the past, but I think that the oversight needs to be minimal in trying to solve the problem and not create more of a problem. We don't want to make it harder for property owners to use their property in different ways. I know as someone who, when I go to a place and I travel, I use short-term rentals. I don't use hotels. I prefer it. And I know there's a lot of people out there who like that. So I understand that there needs to be some changes made, but I would strongly caution you against over-regulating that and to use some--
Do you know that right now in the city of Laconia, short-term rentals are illegal?
Yes, and I think that's why it does need to be addressed.
Right, okay.
Because you have a lot of people operating illegally who I think--
Good, decent folks.
Yeah, yep. And I've even, you know, I lived for 10 years across the street from one of the quote-unquote "problem" properties, and I never had any issues. And if I did, yeah, I would like there to be a way to go about addressing that, but there's concerns about having, you know, requiring people to either be on-site or in the town. There's ways around that, that you can get what you want out of the regulation without putting unnecessary burden on the property owners and without encouraging it. You know, there's a lot of talk, and I know that you, as a council, have been seeking to be in support of business and property owners, and so I just, again, encourage some regulation on it and oversight, but it needs to be minimal and it needs to be with the concept that we want this in our town because this is what, you know, other communities are doing, and it's working really well.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council on short-term rental?
Good evening. For the record, I'm Kevin Morrison, 518 Shore Drive in Laconia. I guess I'm a, I'm not sure what's being proposed tonight. I didn't get a chance to look at it to see what your people are gonna take up to vote on. My concern is we've had a camp at the end of Eastman Shore Road for over 25 years. We've never lived in it ourselves. It's always been a rental. We rent it out for nine weeks a year, and the rest of the time it just sits there. And I'm just wondering how these regulations are gonna--
I think you're gonna find tonight we're gonna address that issue.
And, you know, people come to the Lakes Region to rent a cottage like we have, and, you know, now there could be some difficulty for the people doing it, you know, which I think is, we're not renting, you know, this is a lakefront cottage, you come into the Lakes Region, and now we, you know, finding that there could be some headwinds for us, and I'm just concerned about that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, how about the historic district issue? Has anybody wished to address the council on the matter of the historic district? That's on the agenda tonight. Nobody fits that definition? Well, a couple of you said you wanted to speak.
Ruben Bassett, again. I operate now two businesses in one of the proposed buildings. It is a priority of mine preserving historic buildings and, but also utilizing them. It concerns me a little bit to start thinking about adding layers of, I don't know if you call it red tape, but regulation at least, to repurposing some of these old buildings. There is already a system in place with the National Registry to do that. So to me, what are we trying, what are we trying to fix? Are we trying to fix one specific system, like issue in regards to the church that none of us want to see torn down? I totally understand that. I'm in support of that, but adding regulation where there's already a system in place to protect historic buildings is a big concern of mine, especially because both of my businesses that operate in the train station, under new proposed regulations, might never have happened. And future plans that we may have may be much harder to do. So as we look around the state and even New England, there's a lot of old buildings that because they've been repurposed are enhanced and stay, but when we make it more and more difficult, then that's a concern of mine. So I do value protecting these historic buildings, but I think that there's already a system in place, and we just need to make sure that we're utilizing that with other buildings that we want to protect.
Thank you. Mr. Moriarty, did you, were you on your way up?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilors. John Moriarty, speaking as the Chairman of the Laconia Public Library Board of Trustees. At our meeting Thursday night, we took this matter up on our agenda, and libraries did pass unanimously a motion that they instructed me to write a letter to you folks outlining our position. I did that this evening, sort of. I read it back to see how it would play, and it took 15 minutes, so I'm not gonna read that to you tonight, but it's here and available to you. Instead, what I would like to give you, if I could distribute those, is a letter from the architect that did the design work and oversaw the construction of the 2005 expansion of the Gale Campus. And for the rest of the audience in the room, essentially what it says is that he enjoyed working on the library, that it's a gem, that he's honored to participate, that in his 45 years of professional work as an architect, he's had the experience of working with many architectural commissions. He goes on to say that unfortunately, popular tastes often get in the way of good stewardship, and that Laconia Library has earned the reputation of good stewardship, and he sees no reason for that to change. So that's sort of the first story, but rather than reading the letter, I'd like to go off-script a little bit and try and tell a story. a little bit and try and tell a story. Hopefully, that's a better use of my time. We, the library trustees, have an obligation, a fiduciary and statutory obligation to our benefactors. Mr. Napoleon Bonaparte Gale was wise enough to give us a substantial bequest, and every library trustee takes that responsibility to his bequest and the care of our building, as well as Ozzy and Goss's in Lakeport, very, very seriously. Honestly, that's a big part of what library trustees do, is make sure that programmatically what happens inside the building is compatible with what happens outside the building. When last week, we had to decide whether to fell a tree or not in the Gale Park, the library trustees showed up to take care of that. Two weeks ago, when we needed to deal with the cladding on the north chimney, the granite cladding on the north chimney, library trustees met the stone mason on the scaffolding and decided what proper stewardship there was. Hopefully, in the week or two that comes up between hailstorms and slush, the steep roof will be addressed with the delicate finials that run around the south ridgepole of the roof. And again, library trustees, I am convinced, will stand up and provide proper stewardship. And it reminds me of the initial story of when I was new to the board, and we were planning the expansion of the library. We had to remove the 10 stained glass windows. This is a very dear story to me. I can't tell it without being somewhat passionate. The 10 stained glass windows that were in the way of connecting the two buildings. And so, we removed them, and I said to the architect, every monthly construction meeting, "Stu, where are we going to put these windows? Stu, how about putting them here? Stu, how about putting them there?" And every time, Stu would say, "No, John, because of this preservation attribute, we can't do this, because we're on the National Register, and we need to pay attention to, and we have an easement, and we need to pay attention to the Secretary of the Interior Standards. We can't put them there." At one point in time, the library trustees actually considered liquidating those windows. We knew that we couldn't preserve them. We knew that if we stored them, they'd get broken, that that was not good stewardship. So, we actually made plans to sell them. And finally, one day, Stu said to me, "John, I think I have the solution." And the 10 windows made their way in to the staircase. And then we went to open the building, and we were all so excited and proud to open the building, and we were not allowed to open the building because of the 10 stained glass windows. And this escalated all the way up the chain of command, and finally, we got an override. We got some person, the right person, I don't even know who it was, who's willing to sign off on those 10 stained glass windows, and they are preserved. The point, it's a long story, but the point is this, sometimes there is a law of unintended consequences. I could certainly stand here today and talk to you about Title 64, Chapter 674, Section 46A, Paragraph 4 of the New Hampshire RSA as it relates to historic overlay districts. I'm not going to bore you with that. I'll send that to you in a letter. But the point of that is that we all remember the Master Plan Advisory Team. We all remember the people advancing Laconia. We all remember Mayor Seymour's Economic Development Roundtable. We all remember the grand effort that we put into making Laconia a better place to invest, an easier place to invest. And unfortunately, as much as we care about the church, as much as we, as trustees individually, want to see that church building preserved, we don't think it makes sense to save one building and put the rest of the neighborhood at risk. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the historic district issue?
Hey, good evening. Tower Shore, 47 Adams Street. I'd like to first just touch on a few points that I think are, I know we've talked about here before, and I'd just like to make sure that the audience understands the myths that come from historic preservation and what's out there to preserve the buildings that we all find significant and dear. Number one, historic, being on the national or state historic registry does not save a building. You can knock that down any moment. It doesn't require you to do anything to that building. It is a designation only, as well as any landmark. So, at no time does a historic registry designation save any building or structure or area. It's fabulous that Laconia has as many buildings as it does on the historic registry, but again, at any moment, any of those, any owner of those can decide, "I'm taking it down," and there's no protection for it. So, at any moment, the train station, depending on who the owner is, could decide, "I'm done with it," and it could be taken down. Secondly, I was not aware, I find it really interesting, the library is on an easement. That being said, historic overlay district regulations, especially the ones we've put forth, and I would hope that at this point, each counselor has read through those ordinances carefully, an easement is going to have a lot more restrictions than the historic overlay district. I can say that personally, I know this. The Bellnet Mill is under an easement, and we find that to be way more restrictive than anything we've put into the historic overlay district ordinances. Thirdly, I'd like to share a story. Quite recently, actually, late last week, I received a phone call from a wonderful woman and her husband, who was calling to ask about just who we used at the Bellnet Mill for construction. They understood that we were in a campaign, and that we were a historic building, and we got into a conversation about who we've used and how we felt about the work that has been being done, and whether they were careful to the historic preservation of our building, which of course, they are. I went on to ask them, "Are you purchasing something in Laconia? May I ask what property you're looking at?" And they stated that they were very interested in some property in Laconia, and they were looking actually at a piece of property on Pleasant Street. I do not know which one. I did not get into the details. They were also coming into Laconia to take, this past weekend, to take a peek at one of the mill buildings across the river from the mill. And so, I, we were in some conversation, and they mentioned to me that they, I had said, "Well, maybe you don't, can I ask you a question?" And they said, "Of course." And I said, "How do you feel about historic districts? Is this something, you know," and I explained what was going on here in the city, and they said, "Oh, that's actually why we're coming. That's actually what has brought us to Laconia, to look at property there. We've read the story about the church. We've been following it." They're from Connecticut, I believe. "And we found that we love the city, and we'd like to invest in it, and we would love to work under a historic overlay district." It tells us that the city is very cognizant of their history and the significance of the buildings that they have there. So, economic development, as I've proved here before in several of the speeches I've given, actually goes hand-in-hand with historic districts. There is a lot of information out there, and again, I will plead to anyone in the audience, anyone on the council, to please reach out to all the other historic districts that are in the city that are finding economic development growing in their cities because of this. It is an assistance, it is not a detriment as well. We've been talking about the Wild Trail and what that brings. It brings people from out of other cities and states and countries. Historic districts do the same thing. People come for the history. They come to see it. They come to experience it. People want experiences. Historic districts can do that. Historic districts do not freeze time. That's not what it is. It assists in creating an area that is pleasant for the people who are living there. It assists in creating a pleasant area for the people who are visiting, and it assists in creating economic, financial growth. And that's the truth, if you do the research, which I've done, a lot of. Finally, if, and I, again, I'm not sure, I guess the library is on an easement, but a reminder that city-owned buildings inside a historic district do not have to follow the ordinances, just like any other ordinances in the city. City-owned businesses, buildings do not have to follow the ordinances. You would hope, and I would hope, that the council would follow as much of a historic overlay district and any other ordinances in the city as much as possible on our city buildings, but it is not, it is not the rule. You do not have to. So, even if the library did not have an easement, they would not have to follow the historic overlay district ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council on this matter?
I'm glad the railroad station was mentioned tonight. I quickly would like to remind longtime residents around here of the Concord Railroad Station, of the Manchester Railroad Station, and probably several others I can't think of, but those were both beautiful, beautiful buildings that were destroyed. One for a parking lot in a coat manufacturer, and I think in Manchester, I think that was a parking lot they put there, or they put up some manufactured buildings. And a lot of people in those communities feel very bad that that was allowed to happen. Here in our community, we can think about the O'Shaes Building, which had something like this been in effect back then, perhaps that building would still be here and be a major anchor building, as we'd say, much like Fannie Hall is in Boston. I, and Dean can correct me. Is Dean here? But I'm pretty sure when this came before the planning board and when we worked on the different parts of this, the intent was not to tell people what kind of a business they could have in the building, certainly not what color paint and windows and stuff like that. It was strictly to protect the exterior of the building. And I feel that's very important for our city, and I think the last time I got up here and talked about it, I said, "You know, who knows? If we don't do something like this, 30 years from now, somebody could come in and say to the city, 'Hey, you know what? I really like where the library is, and we're going to offer them $30 million for that,'" because maybe by that time, $30 million is like $10 million today. "And we think we can put some really nice homes there, bring some nice people here." And there goes the library. Not to say that that couldn't be happened even with this, maybe the council at that time would take all this stuff away, but I think any protection we can give these buildings is a right step forward. And we certainly, all we have to do is look out the window here and see the mill. If not for Peter Carey Janis and some other people, that building wouldn't be there today. And either you can say, "Well, it was a waste of money keeping that building," but I would totally disagree with you on that, and just look out the window, councilors, and just think about that. So, thank you very much.
Anyone else on this topic? All right. Finally, I'm going to open it up again to any topic that's on tonight's agenda.
Dick Gordwell, Long Bay and Southown. Wanted to talk on the topic of zoning, and we happened to have met.
I'm sorry, the what? I didn't catch that.
Zoning.
Zoning.
And specifically, Long Bay and Southown are currently designated RS, residential, single-family. We are zoned currently for no rentals whatsoever, and obviously, we do have rentals, and we've seen successes, and we've seen some huge failures. We don't really want to encourage the failures, and that's what happens under certain zoning circumstances. One of the things being considered for Long Bay and Southown is a designation currently going to be considered for the Weers, which is single-family shorefront residential. And that is absolutely wrong for Long Bay and Southown. We are 100% residential. There's no commercial aspect to our area at all. And when we look back at what we're seeing happen with our short-term rentals, which are happening regardless of what the regulations are in the city, we're seeing two things. We're seeing good people come in and rent and treat the properties like the owners would have, but unfortunately, the owners aren't there. And so, what we're seeing is a lot of extended families coming in. You think you're renting to four, you're actually renting to 20. There's parties late at night. There's parking taken up, and they feel entitled to use every piece of amenity that they can put their hands on, so they end up bringing 10, 20 people to the beaches, and all of a sudden, the owners themselves don't have a place to sit. We definitely are not in favor of the shorefront residential, even though, I guess if you look at the fact that we've got 5,200 feet of shorefront, you might want to consider us that way, but it's not right for Long Bay and Southown, and we would respectfully ask that if it comes up for a vote, that it's no.
All right. May I add some input there?
Yes.
All right. So, this is obviously related to the short-front, the single, the, I'm sorry, short-term rental issue, and it was me that initiated this initiative. And my understanding at the time, based on input I was getting outside of these meetings, and input I was getting from people who showed up at earlier meetings who said they were Southown Long Bay residents who wanted to be able to rent, the impression that I got and conveyed to the rest of the council was that it was the desire of the people who live in that area that they be allowed to do short-term rentals. And so, we passed, if you will, on first reading, the suggestion that those two, your two neighborhoods be rezoned to shorefront residential, so that it wasn't an issue in those two, you could control it yourselves through your own homeowners association.
Right.
Now, since that point in time, and I believe the entire council is aware of this, our planning director has notified us that he has received official communication from both homeowners associations for Long Bay and Southown, indicating that the Board of Directors of those two associations, I believe unanimously, had informed our planning director that they were against any rezoning of Southown, because they, in fact, did not want to see a proliferation of short-term rentals in their two neighborhoods. And I have notified, I can only speak for myself, but I have notified both the planning director and my fellow members of city council that, as far as I'm concerned, that makes us a dead issue, that we certainly would, I can't imagine anybody here would go against the wishes of the two homeowners associations.
That's good to hear.
So, I think that's the end of it.
Yes, and we are able to handle this at a association level. We have declarations and rules and regs, and several of our villages have already gone to 30 days. 30 days brings out an entirely different conduct by renters. You're getting an entirely different population, and they treat the properties as if they were owners. That's an interesting thing that we've learned from having rentals, and we believe we can control that, and we appreciate the fact that you're going to put this back into our hands.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council tonight on a matter that is on tonight's agenda? Okay, thank you all for your comments and attending this evening, and we will move on then to, now to the city manager's report. Mr. Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Included in your packet, you have two reports. I'll start with the economic development report. Again, unemployment across the city, the region, the state, extremely low. The second key number, I'm going to go fairly quickly here, because I know you still have a lengthy agenda ahead of you. The consumer price index number, inflation number for the month of October, came in at 1.8%, so we're running right around 1 and 3/4% on an annualized basis, with two more months of data to come in, and that'll be the number we work into the calculation for the city's tax cap for next year's budget. The project update, again, I'll just do a quick summary. All of our road construction projects were basically in final work, in wrap-up mode for all of them. I'll bring your attention to the third page of the report. Some of you have seen it firsthand. I think all of you have seen it in pictures, but the "Welcome to Laconia" sign and the Guilford Town Line coming into Laconia is up, and the other ones are in progress, so that is there. And then also, a quick update on the Pearlie Pond. Our project coordinator, Chris Ross Humway, has completed the Wetlands Bureau permit application to the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, so that's where that stands. We've done the work on the tree. We'll be handling injections for insects and ants and stuff in the spring, as would be appropriate. We've done some mowing and trimming, and this is the part of dealing with any type of impact in the pond itself, and maybe a minimal dredge is what we're working with New Hampshire DES with at this point. Two documents that I put out on your desk earlier this evening are follow-ups from prior items. The first one I'd like to go to is the one titled "Major Road/". The first one I like to go to is the one titled "Major Road/Bridge Projects for 2020." This is a follow-up to conversations we had a few weeks back on construction schedule and giving all of you and the public a heads up for what next year looks like. The focus here is on major road or bridge projects, on major city streets. There certainly will be work going on, on some of the side streets and some secondary roads, but this is really going to focus on a couple of big projects, and in chronological order. I want to start off by stressing that of these projects I'm going over, we have, are scheduling them so that none of them are occurring simultaneously. All right? So the first one is the replacement of the Route 3 Bridge in the Weers. That is a state project. The window of construction, and I know that both Councilor Cheney and Councilor Hamels sat on that appointed committee that held the public hearings on this particular bridge project, so you're familiar with it. The window of construction is for this coming spring, March 15th through May 15th is the work window. It's a six-week project, so from whenever they start, and weather conditions allow, we're looking at six weeks. There are significant detours. That bridge will be completely shut down, and people will have to be rerouted up Weers Boulevard or back up Roller Coaster over to Parade. So, that's why we are not doing any other projects. We're not starting the Union Avenue work, for instance, until that bridge is back open again, because Union Ave will be one of the detour routes. So, the bid on that has been awarded, and again, weather conditions allowing, that's first thing in the spring. Once that project is finished, we will be going on to, or sorry, I should say, a different area. We're wrapping up the second phase of Court Street right now with a binder pavement on that. We're intentionally letting that sit through the winter, so it can go through a freeze-frost cycle before we come in and do the final wearing course on that. So as conditions allow in the spring, we'll be back on Court Street to raise the structures and do one continuous application of pavement from, basically, the main street intersection down to just before the bridge over the Turkey Brook. So, again, as weather conditions allow, that'll be the final work that we're doing on that section of Court Street in the spring. Again, so once the, the bridge replacement in the Weers is complete, we'll be back on Union Avenue in front of Irwin Marine and continuing from Walnut Street to Stark Street, the project that we wrapped up earlier this year. The, this project is approximately a 14-week project, and the intent is, timing-wise, is to work straight through. So when we get in there at some time in May, we're going to work it through, and the hope would be, it'd be completed in mid-September. Traffic, the overwhelming majority of the time, will flow freely on Union Ave down to the intersection at, at Lakeport, so people can turn onto Elm Street or Clinton Street. We're far enough away from the intersection at that point, so trying to do alternating one-way traffic, we've got an area for the traffic to be able to queue up a little bit, which was not available to us. It was backing up into the intersection when we did the first phase. We know that some people avoiding that area will self-detour, you know, go down Mechanic Street, find other ways around, but we will, on the overwhelming majority of the time, have the full access down to Lakeport Square and that intersection. Once we complete the second phase, again, with the binder course on the second phase, we will be doing the entire stretch there with the final wearing course. And again, it's just binder course, it was down in the first phase this winter. Additionally, we'll be doing an overlay from that point on the intersection in Lakeport Square up to Messer Street as well. You're starting to see a little bit of delamination in a few areas of that. We want to catch that and, and get that into, you know, good condition again. So, when we're finished, basically from Stark Street to Messer Street, we'll have brand-new pavement over, plus all the infrastructure work that we've done in the area of Lakeport. Once that is complete, we'll be focusing on the Court Street Bridge replacement, and that is a city project in conjunction with a state aid bridge program. We're on a 10-year list, the projects are literally out 10 years at this point. We got onto the list for this one somewhere around 2010, 2011 timeframe. The state contributes 80% of the funds, 20% comes in a local match. Our turn is up. The challenge with replacing that bridge is there are no easy detours. There are no side streets there that allow you to go up and around and come down on the other side of the bridge on Court Street. We are doing an accelerated build, we're looking to build as much of that bridge as possible, adjacent or off-site, and then bring it in and fit it, but there's going to be a period of weeks where that detour is in place, and it will be 24/7, just because the bridge physically will not be there. And that'll be occurring post-Labor Day. The state has not gone out to bid on that project yet, but will be doing so sometime this winter. The other, on a major route, we'll be doing an overlay on Beacon Street West. Again, you're starting to see some delamination there. There's no major infrastructure upgrades that need to be done underneath the road, so that'll be however lit, to raise structures and do paving and get that squared away. So that'll be a matter of a week or 10 days, as opposed to a multi-week project with that. So those, that's the timeline. Those are the major projects. Certainly, we're doing other water, sewer, drainage, sidewalk work, overlay work on secondary, you know, city roads, not on the main thoroughfares. There will be obviously a little bit of impact for people who live in those neighborhoods, but it won't be on a major commuter-type of street. But those, those projects will be in the works for various upgrades that I just mentioned. So I can stop there before I go on to my final two items of the night and see if there's any questions or comments regarding construction. All right, before, we will be doing, communicating, looking to work with the local press, looking to do social media, looking to have updates through our weekly e-newsletter, maybe trying to piggyback on existing Laconia-related Facebook pages. All of those options are, are, will be available to us, and how we can communicate to different people as to what's happening on any given week.
Counselor Cheney.
Counselor Cheney. Thank you. I know the manager told us at a previous meeting that one of the concerns about nighttime paving was the cost of keeping the plants open. I, I'd still like to ask what those costs would be, so that we could see if, if, maybe for short money, particularly places like Elm and Stark area, I think those would be improved by nighttime paving. So, if we could get the cost for that, so that we can make a decision based on real numbers.
We can, we try to get just the comparisons on the, on the Union Ave in the area of Stark Street. Obviously, there's a lot of underground utility work that's going on that really needs to be done during the daylight, just for the logistics and the safety and what's available, than trying to, you know, be in trenches and, and stuff overnight, but for the-
I'm talking about the paving.
For the, for the straight paving ones, we can look at some options and present them.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Hamel.
Two things, Scott. The, I appreciate the, the patch job that they had finished on Court Street there to fix what was left, not in great shape. Appreciate that. Also, I want to go back to the street light that Eversource hasn't fixed for over two years, Court and Main. We're ever with that, because now we're in the process of replacing all the sidewalks and the curbing and all that, and if-
We have been reminding them of that. It's on their list. They have not been able to diagnose the issue with it at this point.
For two years. Okay.
They is Eversource?
Yes. Pathetic. I do want to compliment Public Works and the contractors on Lakeport Square, going up to Walnut Street, it looks really good. Messer Street looks really nice. It's, I, I don't know how Court Street's going to end up with, hopefully, the plant's not closing anytime soon.
I think, I think we're getting ready to wrap that up by Wednesday?
Trying.
Okay. Very good.
And the weather looks, looks fairly my own stuff for tomorrow, so that's all. Wednesday's a little lippy, but tomorrow looks good.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Scott.
Anyone else?
Counselor Hosmer. Thank you. Scott, I have received a complaint on delayed lights at, in Lakeport Square, specifically coming from Clinton Street going, trying to get through the intersection to Elm, in that people are cutting, taking a left-hand turn onto Union Avenue, and there seems to be an unnecessary delay there. I've heard that from one person in particular. Not sure if the city's received any other complaints, or whether it's something we could just keep an eye on.
I think I heard from that person, so what has changed in Lakeport is now, rather than Elm Street being on its own dedicated green light while Clinton sits opposite it, now they both come on with green, and as it would be standard traffic practice, if you're going, both cars are going straight through, you, but obviously, you're both are going. If somebody is crossing traffic, we've got signs there that said "Left Turn Yields on Green," and that would be standard-
Right.
-practice. So, and I, I think this is the same person who, who indicated she was calling you as well. This person was coming out of the post office on Clinton-
Correct.
-to cross over to Elm. They actually have the right-of-way in that scenario. They should not be getting backed up, so maybe it's just a-
An out-of-habit, someone's cutting in front of them.
A little bit of a learning curve, or someone may be saying, I need to take a little more initiative and start driving through the intersection, because I do have the right-of-way. I'm not encouraging anyone to have chicken, you know, games of chicken or have accidents, but I think it's probably a little, we did have signage there in advance of that change happening, and there was signage on the, on the, on the light itself that says, you know, "Left Turn Yields on Green."
Okay. Thank you.
While we're just talking, in the next couple of weeks, and it's not weather-dependent, we will have the main street, Court Street, Union Ave intersection, all four legs of it will have the availability of the yellow flashing, turn, and again, yielding at appropriate time. So people will see the changes there, so that if they're starting to make a left-hand turn and no one's coming the other way, they've got the ability during a particular leg of that light, just a particular cycle, to go ahead and make that motion. So that's, that's occurring over the next couple of weeks.
Any follow-up, Counselor?
No, thank you.
Just another quick question, Scott. On the Weers Bridge, when they shut that down, do you know if they're going to address the deterioration of the sidewalk there?
I had not looked at that spec recently. I know you were on the committee. I don't know if Wes, they addressing sidewalk there? Okay.
Great. And the other thing I noticed when I was reading in your report, that the painted lines for the turn lanes are not going to be painted over the winter. Is any, what's the reason for that?
You're talking on Court Street?
Yeah.
I think we did the same thing.
Well, I mean, down at, down at the intersection, it said there's not going to be any turn lanes being painted.
No, no, those are, for, for cars lining up at the traffic light, that'll be done. What it means is the same thing we did a winter ago. We didn't put the, the center turning lane all the way down the strip of Court Street.
Oh, okay.
So no, we will have, we will have appropriate markings at the intersection-
Okay.
-for the winter. It's just that center turning lane will come into play again once we do the final wearing course next spring.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Two other items tonight. I'm pleased to announce an appointment as an alternate to the Board of Assessors, a resident by the name of Jim Rice. Jim brings a great background in, in working for Department of Revenue Administration, has worked in, as a, as a assessor, has worked in contracted assessing in communities, and is currently the assessor in the town of Durham. And he's been a resident here for a few years now, and so obviously brings a great skillset, and he will, with this announcement tonight, we'll get a letter out to him, and he'll be a new alternate to the Board of Assessors. And the final thing deals with this picture here, and this ties into, the council approved some funds a while back for the, a set of banner poles to be placed right out here at the main street intersection, one being in Stewart Park, and the other one, we had permission to go on the, on the landmark in Best Western Property a little bit before their flag poles are. So, it was approved, it fell through the cracks a little bit with the changing of the director in Parks and Rec, so we apologize for that. The amount of funding to come from the downtown TIF was voted on not to exceed $25,000. We did a little research, just because of the span that we are covering there with those poles, it's not the typical set of wooden banner poles that we have crossing Weers Boulevard. These are basically covering five or six lanes of traffic and need to be designed and engineered to a much stronger standard than the other ones. So, this is a picture of what is in Concord right now, and this would be the style that we are, are looking to put in. It would be black. You can see it is on a raised foundation of some kind. I cannot tell you at this moment what that foundation of, this is going to be the accurate depiction, or it might be a little bit bigger, depending on the engineering work that needs to go into it, but it is going to be something along this style. Secondly, the minimum bid came in on that at $42,800, so far above the, not to exceed $25,000. So before we award of the bid, I wanted, A, to come back to you, because we'll need more funds if you would like to continue with it, and B, we will be on some kind of a raised foundation in Stewart Park and on the landmark.
Is that foundation in the price?
It's in, it's in the 42,800. I can't tell you that specifically, it's only going to be eight inches tall and 24 inches in diameter, but it, it'll be sized to support that pole for our location.
All right. So what's the council's desire on this? Counselor Hosmer.
Thank you. Can you refresh my recollection, what, what banner was going to be hung from these poles?
It was a request of the Downtown TIF Advisory Board to have that there, just to promote and market everything from Pumpkin Festival to the dog races to-
Farmers Market.
Farmers Market, or whatever might be in play.
Whoever would be willing to pay for the banner, one presumes.
Yes. We have a banner policy in place where for the existing banner poles, they get, they're used by the Motorcycle Week sponsors during that event, but they're available to others for a nominal fee, and they have to take care of the installation and provide insurance, you know, the city has an additional insured type of thing. So, they're available to, to nonprofit type of groups, promotional, promotional groups.
So if I may, is it $17,000 more for, for both of them, or each pole? I'm confused on that.
This, the set engineered and constructed, the low bid came at $42,800, so it's $17,000 more to complete the project with one pole on each side of the main street span down here.
Thank you.
So you're looking between Stewart Park and the hotel, right?
Yes.
So the question is, does the council want to proceed with the understanding it's going to cost $17,000 than originally, more than originally expect with the money to come out of the TIF fund, correct?
That was where the original 25 was slated to come from.
Yeah. I'm not in favor of it. Tell you that.
Well, that's, I'm looking for consensus, so I don't go ahead and do something.
Anyone want to make a motion? Floor is open to a motion.
I'll make a motion that we delay the project.
Delay the project? What does that mean?
Delay, it might be forever.
I think we're on to relook at it, and see if there's another way to accomplish the objective. $42,000 is a lot.
So you want to table it for now?
Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah, I'll table, I'll make a motion to table it.
All right. And, and with instructions for the administration to do what while it's on the table?
Look for other alternatives that aren't quite as rich as that.
Yeah.
All right. Madam Clerk, did you get that?
Or-
We have a motion from Counselor Hamel to table the issue of the banner pole across Main Street, banner poles across Main Street, with the understanding that the council is asking the administration to check into possible alternatives that would be less costly.
May I?
Is there, wait a minute. Is there a second to that motion?
I second it.
Seconded by Counselor Haynes. Discussion, Counselor Ballance.
Yes. If we took this off the table, how long would it be before we could put up the banner poles?
Poles would be constructed in the spring as soon as ground conditions would, would allow. It's obviously not a big project, but the design or the engineering work could certainly be completed over the winter. So as weather conditions allowed, it could be constructed in the spring.
Okay. Any further discussion? All's in favor of tabling, please raise a hand. Six votes affirm that that motion carries. So I'd ask the clerk to keep that on the agenda under old business, I guess, or alternately, the city manager could put it back on the agenda.
Why don't we do that, so it doesn't confuse people, and it's just kind of hanging out there?
All right.
And that's what I have for the mayor and council this evening.
Any other questions or comments for the city manager at this time? No? All right. We're on to new business. We just have two brief items on our new business tonight. The first is a request by Laconia Frozen Diamond Coed Softball Tournament for fundraising on the city park, on a city park property. The specifics are on page 19, councilors. We're talking about Saturday and Sunday, January 25th and 26th. That's correct, January 25th and 26th. They want to play softball on the baseball field and the softball field at Memorial Park. And they're, they're, they expect to raise more than $2,000. That's why this is coming to the city council for approval.
Parks and Rec.
Any questions or comments at this time?
Parks and Rec approved it, right?
Yes.
I have, I have a question. Do you know, are they going to plow those fields, Scott? Are they going to plow the fields to play on them?
I, I would not expect that. I would think that if anything, they may shovel baselines, but I think that's part of the fund of playing-
Okay.
...either in the snow or on top of the snow, and the clerk obviously looks like she's played before and says, no, they don't shovel or plow or anything. It's just-
All right, because we had irrigation heads there and things like, you know, so, okay.
All right. A motion be in order to approve the request by Laconia Frozen Diamond Coed Softball Tournament for fundraising on city park property on January 25 and 26, 2020, from 8:00 AM until dark at Memorial Field Baseball Field, from 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM at Memorial Park Softball Field. Counselor Hosmer makes that motion. Counselor Haynes, do you want to second that?
Yes, I will.
Do you want to participate?
No. No.
It's your award, so I thought you would be there umpiring.
Snowballs.
You could wear your ice skates.
Yeah, right.
All right, we have a second from Counselor Haynes. Any discussion? All's in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative that motion carries unanimously. And lastly, we have the annual authorization of boat dealers under new business to act as agents for the city. We have a list here of seven boat dealers, uh, that the city council is being asked to authorize as agents for the city, uh, by the city clerk Cheryl Hebert. Uh, any questions before we get to this? Pretty much formality every year. First motion be to allow the renewal of the boat agent agreement with the state of New Hampshire Department of Motor Vehicles with the city of Laconia and boat dealers. Counselor Hosmer makes that motion. Counselor Lippman seconds it. Any discussion? All's in favor, please raise a hand. Have six votes in affirmative that motion carries unanimously. And a motion will now be in order to allow the city clerk to sign boat agents agreement on behalf of the city of Laconia with the seven listed Marinas. Counselor Hosmer makes that motion. Counselor Lippman seconds it. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative that motion carries unanimously as well. And we are on to unfinished business. The first item of unfinished business is support for the rail to trail alternative for the Wild Trail segment from Lakeport to Weers Beach. And that is, uh, the main topic, uh, from our audience tonight. And that is on page 32. Where did I do it? There we are. Page 32 of your packet and the actual resolution that is proposed tonight is on page 33. So I would, uh, open the floor at this point in time to any counselor who'd like to address this issue. Counselor Hosmer, would you like to lead off?
Um, I, I'd be happy to and I appreciate everyone who came tonight to offer testimony on this particular, uh, resolution. I also appreciate you, Mayor Angler, in clearing up some of the, um, information that has been, um, we'll say out there, uh, in various media platforms that may have not have been accurate. Um, I think that what we, we have here is clearly two, a number of groups, both the Wild Trail as well as, uh, members of Long Bay, South Bay, as well as those who are the, the rail enthusiasts and also, uh, it's probably more than enthusiasts. It's about protecting, um, uh, an industry here that, um, they've indicated has a significant economic impact, not only on, on our city, but also in our region. Uh, one of the questions I would, I'd like to pose to perhaps anyone from the Hobo Railroad, the, we've had a reference to the Stone Consulting Group Economic Impact Study. I, I have what appears to be, I think we all have what appears to be the executive summary of this, a one-pager. Uh, I'm hoping that when, I think that we probably need a little more time to compare the economic impact analysis, um, done by Stone Consulting Group as well as Alta in order to have, make a more informed decision. So I'm wondering if someone from Hobo, whoever has possession of that would be willing to provide copies to the city council, not just an executive summary, but a full copy of the report.
Can anyone speak on behalf of them?
Sure. I'd be more than happy to. Ben Clark, um, we were able to with Stone Consulting, put a very comprehensive package together that included customer names, uh, there was, uh, some business methods information in that report in order to give them all of what they needed to have a comprehensive overview in terms of our operation and what it entails. Um, I would certainly, uh, consider providing a redacted version of that that wouldn't reveal trade secrets or what have you.
Sure.
Customer names and that specific type information so that everyone here could have that information at their fingertips. You know, we want desperately to try and find a way to make this work. We've invested our lives and our livelihoods in terms of making a small business that's, was started by my father and, and the rail line was run by my grandfather before that, uh, into something that can be a shining star for not only the Lakes Region, but for the White Mountains and beyond. So anything we can do to try and continue that dynamic, anything we can do to, to try and improve rail service, uh, you know, we're all ears. Uh, about 10 years ago, there was so much positive excitement with the Colonial Theater and, and the, uh, the, the parking garage was going to get revitalized that, that our family took our hard-earned money and we, we spent more than we probably should've in order to renovate the downtown railroad station, thinking that Laconia was just on the cusp of something great. And it's taken longer to get there than we certainly would have hoped and probably longer than many of the folks here would have hoped. But with the theater coming on and some of these other opportunities we were talking about, it just seems like there are so many opportunities to work together and synergies that could be explored. So, long story short, absolutely, we would consider that, just so long as we didn't, you know, compromise any of those business methods or the specifics to the, the customers and those who had put their faith in us in, in trying to get that document together.
Uh, that, that sounds about right to me and that's the last thing, we wouldn't want anything that, um, to be shared with us that wasn't necessary for us to not only read the report, but, uh, judge its credibility and the value of it as well so we can have a, a comparison between the reports.
Sure.
So, any, any sense of time when we might be able to get that?
Oh, uh, yeah, we can consult about that and get back to you in the near future in terms of, you know, how soon do you need it and, and what would be appropriate? So, uh, it's going to take a little time to try and pair some of that out, but, uh, you know, within a, a reasonable timeframe, I'm certain that we could get you what you need.
I, I don't know if the city manager might be somebody, might be the point of contact for this and they could, uh, he, uh, if, Mr. Clark can send it to you and you can disseminate it with us?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, fantastic.
So do you wish to make a motion?
I do wish to make a motion right now. I think in, in light of the information that we still do not have, it's probably an appropriate time to, to make a motion to table this resolution.
All right. So Counselor Hosmer moves table resolution 25 pending the council having in its hands the, what is it called?
Uh, the Excursion Railroad Economic Impact Analysis from the Stone Consulting, Inc.
All right. So that we can study that as well as the Alta City, which we already have our hands on.
Yes.
Is there a second to that motion? Counselor Ballance seconds that motion. Any discussion?
Henry, go ahead.
Well, I was also pleased tonight to hear, um, people looking to roll up their sleeves potentially to solve all the issues here, which is, you know, to, um, offer the amenity of a, um, trail that would take, connect the rest of the Lakes Region, to be able to maintain a active railroad in the area and to finally get what was originally in the plans for Southdown, um, of a way of, um, accessing the property to be able to, uh, respect the rights of the owners of the Southdown while still accomplishing something that was in the original conceptual plans for the approval of, of Southdown. So, um, if nothing else, if you, a little of this controversy tonight hopefully, um, puts us in a position where we all work together to make it all work for the, um, citizens of the Lakes Region and for the benefit of the economic well-being of the entire community, which is really where our hearts are at.
Counselor Cheney.
Well, first I'd like to ask if, if it's possible for the city to provide me with additional storage on my computer for the number of emails that I've, I've gotten. Fortunately...
We can put, we can put a cloud over your house and store them, store them in a cloud.
Familiar with the delete button.
Yes. And, uh, I think there are several people here tonight who called me and I had to call them back, so I, I appreciate that phone calls no longer are, or, or out-of-town calls are expensive like they used to be, uh, because I made plenty of them. I'm, uh, I'm opposed to, uh, tabling this motion. Uh, I want to, I want to just put it to bed tonight and, uh, if it gets brought up at some future time, that's fine, but, but I honestly feel that, uh, this needs to go away. And, uh, I, I just think it prolongs the agony for both the railroad folks and for the Wild Trail folks to, for this council to say, we're going to postpone a decision on this. These folks may well feel compelled to come back a second time. I'm sure, uh, the folks at Wild Trail will feel compelled to bring additional, uh, pressure to bear if we, if we postpone this. So although, although I understand the, the motive and, and I, I don't disagree entirely, I personally just would like to see this, if, if we want to bring it up another time, fine, but let's, let's for once be definitive.
Any other discussion? Counselor Lippman?
I think we are being... I think it's definitive to keep it on the, uh, table because this, it's time for the community to come together, solve this issue. It's been on the table too long with everybody just looking out for their own specific interest in this. And, um, so I'm, I'm not in favor of where you're coming from on it.
Anyone else? Counselor Hamel?
Yes, um, I, I'd just like to make a comment, um, about this whole thing. And, uh, I, I see no reason whatsoever, uh, and it was stated that the Wild Trail and the railroads can't get along and can't be coexistence at the same time, uh, at all. Um, we have several gems in New Hampshire. Once the Mount Washington and I believe the Hobo Railroad, the Concord, I mean, the Conway, the, uh, Cog, they're unique things to New Hampshire and they should all be treasured. Um, but I have a but. And, uh, I've been on this council for several years and I'm here for the betterment of Laconia. That's my goal and I believe that's the goal of everybody here. Um, for a long time, the Hobo Railroad, uh, came to Laconia way back when, when I was a kid and we had train rides and they were great. Uh, just within the last, uh, several years, uh, they stopped coming to Lakeport. There might be a financial reason for that. Uh, I don't believe that Drawbridge in Lakeport's highly ever down anymore for the train to cross. I don't even know how much, how often they come to Lakeport or, or by the Drawbridge. They seem to go from the Weers to Meredith. I don't know if they go north very much. Um, when Pumpkin Fest was here, first started the first year, the train was here and I believe they'd done a tremendous business. They went from downtown to Mosquito Bridge, Weers Bridge, I mean, Winasquan Bridge, uh, this old time is called Mosquito Bridge. But, um, they used to do the Santa Train. We had the parade, it was at the depot and that train was full. That's not there no more. A few years ago, uh, well, a few years could be quite a few now, but we had, the, the city worked feverishly trying to get Harley-Davidson down here and we succeeded. They took the parking lot for three years. We asked the Hobo Railroad to come down, bring people from the Weers to Laconia. Did not happen, they would not do it. Um, so to me, uh, Laconia, by them not coming to downtown station, which they own the middle of, which is, nothing has happened with, uh, has lost a lot of revenue. The downtown, uh, restaurants and, and, and the businesses that could, you know, would love to have that business, but the railroad doesn't come here. I don't know if it's because the lines just aren't in good repair. Uh, you know, I, I don't know, but, uh, I think we should get together and, and find out, uh, what we can do to help each other out. Uh, it's not just the Weers, Laconia encompasses the Weers, Lakeport and Laconia. And I'd like to see that distributed amongst all of them. Now, as far as an active line, I, I went online and I got the, all the lines in New Hampshire. So I was curious, I didn't know. Uh, and it's true, the, the only spur in the middle of the state comes through Laconia and up to Lincoln. And, um, I, I think the Department of Transportation, the Railroad Division, I guess you could call it, has really let the ball fall on keeping up the railroads tracks. You probably can go 10 miles an hours on, an hour on those tracks, probably not much more. Uh, I, I don't know if that's true or not, but that's what I heard because of the safety of the tracks. So if New Hampshire is, is so hot on keeping these rails active, they need to spend some money on them. I mean, we're spending billions and billions of dollars, I think, on 93 in the south to make it six, eight lanes, whatever they want to do in the future, to get cars up here faster, get more carbon going into the air. Just think if we had a train from the south that would come up through. But they're not even spending any money on any of that kind of stuff and they should. They should absolutely do it. To have a train come way back when, I wasn't even alive then, but I heard about it, trains from Boston would come up here, snow trains they call them, bring skiers and all that kind of stuff. Uh, and as Charlie said, the Down Easter, uh, going up to Freeport, Maine, it, it's full, you gotta, you, lots of times you can't even get on it. So I think people, there's people there that would love to ride the trains, but there's none to ride. If, if the trains come through here three times a year, then as a city counselor, I'm looking to say, what is the better use of that? And, and it might be the Wild Trail, but I would hope that it would stay the railroad, but it needs to be used. You need to come down here, you need to use your station that you bought. Uh, that's got to be done. So that's my two cents worth, but I thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Ballance?
I, um, I, I want to say that I'm encouraged by the discussion that we had tonight with respect to these issues. Um, I thank Mr. Clark and everyone else who comes in with the spirit of what I call public-private partnership to move somewhere, which is, I've always been an advocate for that. I think there's room for the Wild Trail, I think there's room for the rails, I think there's room for Southdown. I think we can make solutions to all of this and we can make our economy grow. Um, coming in here as you did and investing in the railway station, I thank you for that. Um, the Colonial's going to get off within days.
Full construction there right now.
Um, so I, I just, I don't, I don't want it to be negative because I think this is positive, that we have this kind of a discussion and we move forward in a public-private partnership to get things done. So, thank you everybody for coming out tonight.
Anyone else? Motion on the floor is to table resolution 25. It's been made and seconded. We're ready for a vote. All those in favor of tabling, please raise a hand. All those opposed, please raise a hand. We have five yeses, one no. Resolution 25 is tabled. Second item under unfinished business is, uh, to amend City Chapter 235 with respect to zoning by creating a new definition for lodging short-term and corresponding regulations for this type of use under residential accessory uses. And members of the council, you have, as I'm sure you know, on page 35, 36 and 37, a copy of the proposed, uh, ordinance as of our last meeting. And before we get into what direction the council wants to take tonight, uh, I, I, I'm hopeful, perhaps unrealistically so, I'm hopeful that the council will, will, uh, obviously we need, we need four of the people sitting around this table tonight to agree on something, to advance it. Uh, I'm hopeful tonight that we will have at least four votes for something that we can pass on first reading tonight and refer to a public hearing on December 9th. That's my hope. Uh, so I'm going to kind of just, with your indulgence, I'm going to kind of structure the, the, uh, discussion tonight without in any way restricting anyone being able to speak or propose changes or amendments or anything, but my goal is to try as I, best I can to steer us, uh, efficiently toward something that we can get four or more votes to, to hopefully, uh, pass something tonight on to a public hearing. So that's my goal. So the first question that I would ask informally along those lines of the council is a, a informal, uh, poll, if you will. You know what's before you as of coming into tonight. How many of you would be willing to support tonight passing the ordinance as written, um, on first reading and refer it to a public hearing with possibly minor changes and corrections? Okay? In other words, not a thorough rewrite or whatever, but with minor changes and corrections. So how many would be willing to do that? So how many would be willing to do that tonight?
I guess it depends on what you define as minor edits and changes.
Well, specifically, I know we've had conversation, for example, about the 90 consecutive nights. So if that number becomes some other number, to me, that's a minor change.
Not to the people who are going to be affected by it, though.
All right, so I see, I saw four councillors raise their hands, so I think, so, so I would, so what I'd like to do then is get one of you to move the adoption of Ordinance 235 in its current form, and then we can get to amendments. And then the floor would be open to whatever anybody wants to do. And if in the end we can't pass it, then the floor will be, I'm sorry? It's on the table now? Okay, all right, I'm sorry. Thank you for correcting me. So the motion is ordered to take Ordinance 235 off the table. Counselor Hosmer makes that motion. Counselor Hamel seconds it. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. All those opposed? One. Five votes yes, one vote no, it's back on.
And they'll tell you why.
On the table.
Yep.
All right, all right. So now a motion would be in order to approve Resolution 235. First of all, we need to move a waiver, waiver reading of its entirety. I need a motion to waive reading of this ordinance in its entirety and to read tonight by title only. Counselor Hosmer makes that motion, and Counselor Haynes seconds it. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. All those opposed, please raise a hand. Five votes yes, one vote no, that motion carries. All right, the next motion would be in order, and then we can get to amendments, to move a first reading of Ordinance 235, amending Chapter 235 zoning to create a new definition of short-term lodging and accompanying result regulations. Someone make that motion, please? Counselor Hamel, seconded by Counselor Haynes. All right, now, the floor would be open to any amendments to Chapter 235 as presented to you tonight.
Don't we have to vote on that?
I'm sorry?
Don't we have to vote on that? No?
We just did.
Oh, okay. Did I miss something?
Didn't we?
No, you made a motion, it was seconded, now it's open for discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, yes, we don't have to, so it's on the floor now for discussion, and part of discussion could be amendments.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay.
I'll, I'll go first.
All right. Counselor Balance.
This came out of the Planning Department pretty much without restrictions at all. That's what the planning recommendation was for. Now, we're looking at only one scenario in which we allow short-term rentals, and that's owner-occupied. And that's simply too restrictive and too narrow. It excludes too many people who are good, decent people and are being responsible with respect to their property, and it's simply too narrow. So what we should be looking at is not some kind of rigid.
Could you screw up your mic?
Is not some kind of rigid application of short-term rentals. We should be looking at a flexible application of short-term rentals where we can accommodate people that act responsibly. Mostly, we don't want to drive people underground, and that's exactly what we're going to do if we pass this ordinance as the way it is. They're just not going to, they're going to keep doing it, they're not going to tell anybody about it, and they're going to try to get away with it. We want, we want people to come and register, be open about it, be flexible about it. We can do scenarios in which if they do, for example, if they do eight, seven, eight, 10 days to one rental, one continuous rental, there ought to be a waiver for those kinds of rentals. If they're doing, say, three months of one, one rental in which they're the owner occupier, I'll give you an example, the Winnipeg Playhouse, they use that place as an owner-occupier for the summer months, in the summer season. So that's four months of the season that they're renting, that they're providing housing at their home for the actors who come in and perform. We ought to have a situation that's flexible and acknowledges that. We ought to have a situation that recognizes 30 days of continuous rental as being a waiver. This is just far too rigid.
But counsel.
I don't, I don't know the answer. I'm going to shut up in a minute.
Sorry.
I promise.
I was going to ask you a question.
I, I don't know the answer, and I don't, I don't know how we do it, but I think we need to do some work on it.
So my question to you, if I could, is if we change, I know there's been conversation about this, right now it says 90 consecutive nights is, or less is considered a short-term rental. If that number was dropped to 14, for example, then it would take care of much of what you just talked about, correct?
The answer to that is, I don't know. And the reason I don't know, because if you drop the number to 14 or 8, or whatever, whatever number it is that you use, there may be still blocks of time where a particular user of the platform or provider of the platform doesn't have 14 days or eight days, but has like three straight stretches of 10 days or something like that. And we ought to be flexible enough to accommodate that. It, I get it that, well, let me put it another way. This is not Miami, this is not New Orleans, this is Laconia. We can accommodate reasonable people in the Lakes Region trying to take advantage of some resources and enhancing our economy also. So that's my thoughts on it.
All right, anyone else? Anyone else want to propose any amendments?
I'd propose that we start at seven and collect the data that we look at, and I think there's probably a couple other tweaks to deal with the special circumstances that have come to our attention that seem reasonable, you know, Winnipeg Playhouse being one example. There are probably a couple others, but, you know, I think getting a handle on what's going on by registering folks, taking it slow to see what the real impact of it is. I think 90 is extreme.
I think seven's too low.
We have, we have a disagreement there, I guess, in terms of taking away, you know, people's property rights that they've used for years and years and years, and, you know, whether it be, it's similar to me in many ways, the road issue that we deal with, is people have been relying on ability to do things for decades, and then to go around and just take it up, snatch it out from under them is just, to me, not right. On the other hand, I do respect that, you know, if, we've got to do something about someone who's disrupting a neighborhood situation, and I think starting too extreme is going to boomerang on us.
Counselor Chaney.
I tend to agree with Counselor Hamel that seven is too few, but I agree that the 90 is, is.
About 14.
I could live with 14. I, I think.
Want to make a motion?
Happily.
So Counselor, Counselor Cheney moves under the definition of short-term lodging that we change 90 consecutive nights to 14 consecutive nights. And that's the definition for compensation for stays of between one and 14 nights, consecutive nights. And therefore, if it's more than 14 nights, it's not regulated. Only 14 or less is regulated. So Counselor Cheney, you second it. Counselor Hamel, so this is a proposed amendment. Any discussion of the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment, please raise a hand. All those opposed, please raise a hand. Four votes yes, two votes no. So the amendment is adopted, so 90 is now 14.
Think about what we're doing. Think about what we're doing. Do we have to, because what we're going to do is, if you want to go down this track, we're going to move it to a public hearing in December. If we decide that there's other amendments that would be prudent to consider before the public hearing, we might have to have another public hearing.
You like them.
I always advocate for them, but that doesn't mean we need two in a row. So, you know.
It's a work in progress. You've got to have, you've got to start somewhere.
I can, I can live with 14 a lot better than I can live with 90. There's other things that, that, I don't know.
Does anybody else have any amendments to suggest? Counselor Hamel.
Yes, I'd like to propose we change, where is it? On page 36 or two, whichever one you're looking at, and that would be number five. It says approval of short-term lodging use will be in effect for one year from date of approval and must be renewed annually. I'd like to change that to two years, so that they would only have to come in every two years.
Okay, the motion is on item number five, under permitted or prohibited in the following zones. Item five, approval for short-term lodging use will be in effect for.
Two years.
Two years. All right, change one to two, from date of approval and must be renewed every two years? Every two years replaces the word annually. Got that, Madam Clerk?
I do.
From date of first approval according to a fee schedule defined in 23592 of this chapter.
That would cut the fees in half, basically.
Basically, that would cut the fees in half. All right, so that is a motion by Counselor Hamel. Is there someone who would like to second that motion? Counselor Hosmer seconds that motion. Discussion. All those in favor of the amendment, please raise a hand. Five votes yes, any opposed? One vote no. Five yes, one no, that amendment carries as well. So now we have two approved amendments. So are there any other proposed amendments? I would like to make a suggestion. I can't make a motion, and I won't. And I think those of you who read my memorandum to the Planning Director, which I circulated last week, are familiar with this issue, and that is the issue of whether or not we should exempt camps from the regulation. And as I said to the Planning Director, he brought the subject up, the Planning Director did, and I, I suggested to him that for my own two cents' worth, I didn't object to that as long as we could agree on what the definition of camp is. To me, camp means not inhabitable on a year-round basis, by humans anyway. It doesn't mean, you know, a 6,000-square-foot house at, on Pendleton Beach Road or something other that somebody refers to as their camp. And so, so anyway, I, I don't like to make legislation on the fly, but I would like to suggest that if, if, if there's consensus behind this idea, I would like to suggest that, that we instruct the Planning Director to come back to us on December 9th with some language that we could insert on second reading as an amendment to this ordinance that would accomplish that goal, to exempt camps from the regulation and to define in the proper place in the ordinance what a camp is, as far as the city is concerned.
I don't think you should look at it as an exemption. I think you should look at it as a waiver, because we want to know about them, we want to know what's going on. So just a flat exemption.
Well, maybe that's the wrong word. I leave that up to the Planning Director. What I mean is, so right now, owner-occupied is an exemption, if you will, by the way I'm using the word. Maybe that's the wrong word, but you still have to have a permit.
I'm, I'm not sure that that works out that way. I think we should just call it a waiver, and that's the best way to deal with it.
Well, I'm not going to quibble over terms. It would be the same thing that would apply to owner-occupied. That's a waiver, an exemption, whatever you want to call it.
Whatever you want to call it.
And we would, and we would classify camps in the same category as long as we can agree on what the definition of a camp is. Let me get the city manager, then I'll come back to you.
So just for clarification, so I can make sure we get you the right information, you're still looking for that camp owner to come down and register and have the inspection, is just, okay?
Yes. Yes, it doesn't matter where you are in the city. If we pass this ordinance, assuming it's allowed by whatever definition, because you're doing it for more than 14 days at a time, or because you're owner-occupied, or because you're in the shorefront residential area or the commercial resort area, whatever, you still have to register and pay the fee every, every two years and whatnot, so we know exactly where these businesses are that are operating. None of them are exempt from registering. Everybody got that? I think, I think that's the intent. Okay, I'm sorry, Counselor Chaney.
No, that's okay. I, I, I'm not so sure that I object to the 6,000-square-foot home on Pendleton Beach. If it's not occupied, if it's not used for nine months of the year, or eight months of the year, or whatever, they close the place. I think that still sort of qualifies as a camp. I'm not sure size defines a camp. I went to camp in Center Harbor, and I think the main house was a good 10,000 square feet, but it's a camp. It's, it's closed for eight months or nine months of the year.
Well, the problem with that, as I see it, and perhaps I'm not looking at it correctly, is that if we allow a really broad definition of camp, then we're allowing anyone to call the home they want to rent out a camp.
I guess, I guess I need to think about this a little bit.
Well, we have two, if, if my suggestion achieves consensus here, we would have two weeks to think about that. Counselor Libman.
I think what you're talking about is seasonal rental, not a camp.
Yeah, thank you. This, I, yes.
You know, I think what we're talking about is something that's only available during the summer. Would you not concur with that?
I think whenever. Whatever.
Well, we'd have to define that somehow.
Some, some period of time.
There's a narrow period of, of the year that it's available and is not available. But also, you know, I think we know from common sense that in an area like ours, the vast majority of the demand for short-term rentals is going to be in the summer, right? So we can't exempt the summer, or there's no point in having an ordinance at all for everybody. I mean, we can't say anything goes in the summer, but the rest of the year, you know, you're regulated, because that would, that would in effect be saying anything goes. So we've got to find a, a ground there, using, whether, whether the word is seasonal or camp or whatever, but it's, 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 you know, camp to me implies, somebody says I have a camp, like Mr. Morissette has said to us a couple times, to me, that implies rustic.
That's a camp.
You know, no heat, can't live there in the winter, not a house, a regular residence. All right, so I'm looking for whether or not we want to advance this camp issue or not.
Camp or seasonal.
I would like to.
Counselor Hosmer? Yes?
Yes.
You know what I want to advance? I want to advance some kind of a structure, and I don't, I frankly don't know how to do it, but that would give the individual wanting to use the program some kind of an opportunity to squeeze within a waiver for some, for, for reasons. Like I can think of the, one of the people who came in and spoke and had a residency here, she didn't use it as her primary home, but she lived in town, she was there every day, she, it was run in the neighborhood. That ought to, we ought to be able to accommodate that kind of person who acts responsibly.
Well, I think, Counselor, we, first of all, if we pass this ordinance, obviously, this isn't written in stone forever. It can be amended down the road, whatever. We would be adopting some certainty now for the coming season, hopefully, for people to be able to make decisions based on use of their property and whatnot, and I think that should be a priority for us. That doesn't mean it has to be done today or December 9th, or, you know, I'd say hopefully by the end of January, I would say I won't be here, but, so that people have certainty coming into the summer rental season and whatnot, what they can do and what they can't do. But I would, but I would suggest to you that whether it's on December 9th or January or whenever, if you have specific language. But I would, but I would suggest to you that whether it's on December ninth, or January, or whenever, if you have specific language, legal language, that can accommodate what you want to accomplish, then you can propose that as an amendment at any point in time to the ordinance, and the council will vote it up or down. All right, anybody else have any, any amendments?
I'd just like to add a concept here. You know, there are some of us, not me included, but some of us have certain property rights that we've been exercising, and, you know, I think we have to think long and hard before we take something away from someone, you know. There's a balancing act to be done here, and I think David's on something, and I, and I think that certainly the seasonal or amendment, but I, I do think we need a category of, you know, why do we want to make it harder for the Winnipeg Playhouse to stay in business? Why do we want to do that?
We don't. I don't think we do, and I think we can, I think we can come up with something.
But we're, we're not, we're not putting that on the table.
Well, I think, Counselor, I think, Counselor, the issue here that we, we addressed when we discussed this last, a month ago, was that, and Counselor Bounds and I addressed this in discussion at that point in time, is if this were currently legal, this would be easy, because we could simply grandfather everything that's happening now if we wanted to. But it's not legal now, so we can't grandfather it, and the people you talk about, property rights, have all been violating the law.
Well, if, and I'm not an attorney, nor are you, but I think an unenforced law for decades is hardly a law that's really valid.
There, there is a group of people, however, Henry, on the other side of this issue, and that is those people who feel their property rights are trampled on by twenty-two people in a house with three bedrooms, twenty cars in the yard, and people climbing the fence to use their dock.
I absolutely agree with that, too.
We all agree with that.
Well, but.
This doesn't do anything about tho, about that.
Well, I think it does. I, I, I'm sorry to disagree.
All right, any further discussion? All right, the motion on the table is to move on first reading, the approval of ordinance two thirty-five, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, two thirty-five as amended tonight. All right, are we ready to vote on that?
How is it amended? It's not clear.
I'm sorry?
It's not clear how it's amended, other than changing from ninety to fourteen.
In two years.
Two years. Okay.
Yeah, two amendments. Ninety, ninety becomes fourteen, and, and one year becomes two years in terms of the registration process.
And what happened to dealing with the issue of seasonal?
We're, we've instructed the, through consensus, we've instructed the planning director to come to us on December ninth with a proposal for how we might address that, and the exact legal wording to do so. And we can either approve it or not approve it, or amend it at that time.
So we're not going to move to, we're not going to send it to a public hearing?
Yes, we are. We're going to have a vote on that. I don't, you know, we're going to pass, tonight, we're going to have two votes. We're going to have a vote on first reading. If that passes, we'll have a vote on scheduling a public hearing for December ninth, on what did pass.
Okay, but then, then you have to publish that. And that, and that's what we're locked into on December ninth, unless we want to change it again.
Yes, right.
Okay.
Which is perfectly our right to do.
How many amendments to the Constitution? Twenty-seven. So they've changed it. We can change this if, if it doesn't work, so, you know, I mean, and there's over three hundred rentals in Laconia, so you, you can't make a thing for each one. You know, to appease each one. There's three hundred of them. You can't appease them all. So you've got to come up with something that is general, that would work, and if it doesn't work, we can change it. I mean, the basic thing of this was to keep our single-family housing stock to the single family, that's what want to come here. And I'm going to make a, for instance, he had a great one. Right now, in Laconia, we have little sharks floating underneath Laconia, gobbling them up, these things. So if we do nothing, the big sharks are going to come in and take it all, and then where are we going to be? Right?
I, I don't agree.
Well, that's good.
With that analogy.
Well, they are, because there was two houses bought on Irving Street. They live in Massachusetts strictly for Airbnb. That's it, and that's what's going to happen, more and more. This is a great area to come to, and people realize it. It's growing, it's getting better, and this is what they want to do, so they're going to buy the stock.
Counselor Hosmer?
My, my question is for Counselor Lippman. Can you help me better understand why this ordinance might be detrimental to the Winnipeg Playhouse? I, I mean, I was here for the testimony.
We received an extensive letter from the owner of the Winnipeg Playhouse outlining how it would be detrimental to their ability to continue to have their, the viability of their seasonal business, if you will.
Right, I, I received that letter and heard his testimony, but what specifically about this would, this, this ordinance would impact it?
They would be renting when they're not doing their show season. They might be renting for fourteen days or less with respect.
This would prevent them from renting for fourteen days or less.
So this would, this would impact them directly. I, I, I don't know how they work it, but this would prevent them, if they're, if they're actually doing fourteen-day or less rentals during the eight months that they're not in season, or the seven months, I guess, they're in season in the.
Now, we didn't, what we didn't ask when they were here at our last meeting is what is the demand for?
But you know what? I'm sure we could find something to work with that one, and we could pass something. And from what they said at the podium, Meredith is looking to do the same thing.
Well, and that's why I say.
But there are plenty of other towns that aren't.
Yeah, there's plenty of, there's plenty of places that banned it altogether.
And here again, I don't think Counselor Bounds or myself are advocating against anything. We're advocating, we're advocating against a policy that has unintended consequences built into it.
Every policy we pass has unintended consequences.
Is there the potential for you gentlemen to bring us a waiver proposal?
I'm looking to D. D. answer that.
There we go. Stick somebody else with the work.
I think that's a fair ask.
Yeah, and whoever gets to do it.
That's a fair question.
It's always germane. I mean, it's, like I said, as Counselor Hamel pointed out, this isn't the end.
But once you put something in place, we all know it's a pretty heavy lift to, to change it.
We change ordinances all the time.
So I think let's get it right the first time, as opposed to not doing it right the first time.
That's what I said.
It seems to me like.
It ain't going to be right the first time, I'll tell you that.
Any further discussion?
It, it seems to me there's, the ZBA or somebody could be enlisted to review potential waivers under specific circumstances. It just, it seems like we could come up with something that would, would meet your needs and not gut this.
A proposal, for example, a proposal could be made down the road, and by down the road, it could be January, to say it would be permitted by special exception, which would have to be granted by the zoning board. Okay, so somebody would have to, and you'd have to have criteria for what the zoning board, so they just can't say, oh, I like this guy, I don't like that guy, so I'm going to say yes here and no there. But specific criteria that could be applied, so that if they, if the Winnipeg Playhouse came in and made a great case for why they need to do what they're doing and whatnot, the zoning board of adjustment could agree to give them a special exception.
You know, there, there could be a work exception type thing.
I mean, it's a relatively simple amendment, and I think, I think the council would be more than willing to consider a reasonable amendment at any point in time.
The difficulty, Bob, is it's, it's the off-season rentals that are, are going to be the problem for them. Because the people they, they use for acting purposes are there for weeks, more than fourteen days, so they would be.
They're not renting either. That's free for them.
Right, so, I mean, they're, during that period of time.
They're their guests.
But they're looking to do it in the off-season to help pay for taxes and maintenance and whatever, so. And I, and I, you know, I think if we can find some, install, as the mayor suggests, some waiver process that has definite guidelines, reasonable guidelines, I think I certainly could vote for that. And if you, in conjunction with the planning department, can come up with that, I, I'd be inclined.
It's a, it's a struggle. It's a struggle. It's difficult, you know. What are the guidelines?
We can't, we can't argue for not doing it and then do nothing, so we've got to come up with an alternative.
Well, and, and, and to suggest that it's difficult to do is, is a definition of why, you know, we're concerned about it.
But I think just doing the simple is also problematic, so I think you've.
All right, any further discussion tonight? All right, so the motion on the floor is to move, is to approve reading, first reading of ordinance two thirty-five as amended tonight in two places to create a new definition of short-term lodging and accompanying regulations. All those in favor of the amendment as amended, please raise a hand. Four votes yes, all those opposed, two votes no. Four votes yes, two votes no. The amendment is approved on first reading, and the next motion would be to schedule a public hearing on, on ordinance two thirty-five, and schedule it for, during the city council meeting on December ninth.
I make that motion.
To gather public input prior to adoption.
Couldn't we make it for the second meeting in December, giving us time to do some of these machinations?
Well, now you're talking about Christmas. I think that'd be a horrible time to have a public hearing. Usually, our Christmas meeting lasts about ten minutes.
I think that might be the perfect. I'm sorry.
I mean, there's nothing, there's nothing that says that the council has to adopt this on the ninth of, finally, on the ninth of January. I'm just understanding that if we don't, realistically, we're looking at the end of January to have it considered.
He's made the motion.
All right, so someone made a motion to schedule a public hearing. Counselor Bounds, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Haynes seconds that motion. All those in favor of scheduling a public hearing, please raise a hand. This is December ninth. All those opposed, five votes yes, one vote no. The public hearing has been scheduled. Okay, amend cities, again, two thirty-five, adding a new section, Article four in two thirty-five, the historical overlay district, and that ordinance, as proposed, takes up multiple pages, counselors, and starts on page thirty-nine of your packet. And this, Counselor Bounds, you want to address this first, since?
Well.
You've been paying attention to this at the planning board level.
I, I have been paying attention to it at the planning board level. The history. You all know, you're all familiar with the history and how this comes about because of what's going to happen to the church. So there was a quick response, which didn't beat the church to the demolition permit. Nevertheless, the historic overlay district went forward. It's come out of committee.
Babysitting.
Don't you love it? It's come, it's come out of committee. There's been a number of different amendments to it, modifications of it. I assume you've all read it, and if you haven't, there's nothing, there's nothing unusual or stark about it. It encompasses the railroad station, the park, the public, the, the library, and the two pieces of property surrounding the church. And that's where the historic overlay district would start and end, so.
Clarify that for us. Where, what, as, as before us tonight, it simply refers to maps and blocks.
Yeah, so.
Which exact properties are covered?
The train station, Veterans Park, is that what we call that? Veterans Park, the public library, and the entire piece of the church property, but because of.
Which has been subdivided now.
It's been subdivided now, so it would be both halves of the church property.
Three properties there now.
Yeah, it, it wouldn't apply to the church, well, it would apply to the church, but it wouldn't negate the demolition permit that they've already applied.
And as currently written, it would apply to all three properties as subdivided, including the school.
Including the school.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that for everyone. So everything from the school, from the corner of Master Street and Church Street down to and including the train station?
Down to and including the train station, that's right.
All right, so what's the will of the council tonight?
Well, I want to, I want to, I want to just get this to a public hearing and see where it's going with it. I mean, we may, we may amend this, not adopt it, we might not do a lot of stuff, but I want to just see.
So your goal is to get it to a public hearing tonight?
Yeah, my goal is to get it to a public hearing tonight.
So Counselor, Counselor Bounds moves to waive reading of the ordinance in its entirety and to read tonight by title only. Is there a second? Counselor Hosmer seconds that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor of waiving a reading tonight, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative. All right, you also want to move first reading at this point?
I do.
All right, Counselor Bounds, move first reading of ordinance two thirty-five dash twenty-one point one, amending chapter two thirty-five zoning to create a new section, twenty-one one, establishing a historic overlay district and accompanying commission, seconded by Counselor Hosmer. Discussion. Counselor Haynes?
I agree with David that, I think that, you know, this started back in April, and I have followed it as closely as possible. And I've been very passionate about this, so I agree with David. I'd like to move this to a public hearing.
Any other discussion on first reading? Counselor Hamel?
I'm going to vote to move it to a public hearing, but I, I don't approve a lot of stuff in here, and I've been saying this right along. I think it's way too hands-on for people to buy these properties and to invest in them. You know, when you're going, you've got to have them look at swatches of material you're going to use inside. It's just overpowering. Mine here. No, we're. Hang on. Just had it.
We trimmed it down quite a bit.
I don't think you trimmed it any. You know, it says installation modification removal of exterior freestanding lights, direction alteration and removal of walls and fences, installation of pavement, you know, roofing material, signage. And it goes on, plant material. It, it's just, you know, utility poles, flagpoles, mailboxes, window air conditioners, units, single-family residents, accessory apartments. It just goes on and on and on of things that, if somebody buys it, that they're going to have to go in front of people to make their case. You know, you know, site plans, elevation drawings, detailed project specification elements, photographs of your house, your neighbor's house. Requested commission provide samples of swatches, colors, manufacturing, cut sheets, material to be used as appropriate. Other items reasonably needed, you know, drawings, subject buildings, accurate to scale rendering, nearby buildings, and any temporary renting view model to show which process construction in, in context. You know, it's, I can understand a historical district, but, I mean, it's just overpowering for, I wouldn't buy a house or anything in something like this.
But Counselor, don't you think a public hearing will bring a lot of these issues out?
That's why I'm saying I'll go along with the public hearing, but as far as all this stuff in there.
Well, and, and that's a battle to be fought after the public hearing, and I don't disagree.
Way too heavy-handed.
With some of, yeah.
You know, for five people to say.
All right, the motion on the floor tonight is to move to approve on first reading. Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving on first reading, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative. That motion carries unanimously. Next up would be to move to schedule a public hearing on December ninth, two thousand nineteen, during the regular city council meeting to gather public input prior to adoption of this ordinance. Counselor Hosmer makes a motion. Counselor Haynes seconds it. Any discussion of scheduling the public hearing? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative. That hearing is also scheduled, so we have two public hearings on December ninth. Okay. Last but not least, discussion of the installment, installation of bump-out. Last but not least, discussion of the installment, installation of bumpouts on Beacon Street West. And you have a staff memo, councilors, on page fifty-three. Sorry? All right, Councilor Hamel, you asked for this, so.
I did?
Yes, you did.
Yes, you did.
Bumpouts, but basically, I, I would vote against putting the bumpouts there, and I would rather see the yellow flashing lights like we have on Highland Street, now that they're legal again. I would much rather see that. Bumpouts are, they're a big inconvenience to the public works department when they plow, they don't know where they are. You know, the, the wings will clip the granite or whatever. I, I just think that a yellow flashing light would be more observant to the cars coming through there than someone standing on a bumpout and the cars don't stop anyway. So that's my point.
So do you care, you want to make a motion?
I make a motion, we don't put them in on Beacon West.
That's a negative motion, let's put it on positive. You make a motion that we substitute.
Oh, substitute the yellow lights, crosswalk lights, instead of the bumpouts.
All right, is there a second to that motion? Councilor Cheney seconds it. Now we're on to discussion. And some input from the city manager?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and we've got our public works director, Wes Anderson, here as well. Trying to put the flashing beacon in and still be ADA compliant with the tip-down and the level area with the little raised bumps there. We still have to maintain a certain width on the sidewalk, and to land that beacon in an appropriate place is still going to require some kind of a tip-down and a bumpout so that if someone come up there in a wheelchair can get to a safe level place where they're reaching over to push the button and activate it, so you're still going to need some level of a bumpout there. You could do a modified bumpout and put a beacon there, but you're still going to have to comply with the ADA for that area, and there's going to be some kind of a bumpout. We do not plow the downtown area currently with a, with the wing plow. It's done with a scooper truck, and if we're going through there doing sanding or salting, the wing isn't down on there right now, so that's not going to change anything from how we currently plow the downtown right now. Yes, was a bumpout going to stick out potentially, could it get hit? Yes, but it's not going to be because if we're there with our largest vehicle with a wing plow. So we've got, we've got more space on the, on the parking lot area and the retail side to reconfigure something there a little bit more, but to get our, is it forty-eight inches width the sidewalk needs to be? Forty-eight inch with sidewalk, we can't put the beacon there, and you can't set it back on the opposite side on the condo end because that doesn't meet with the compliance of where somebody using is going to go to. So we could modify it best we can, incorporate the flashing beacons, but to be ADA compliant with everything I just mentioned, you're going to have something bumping out in there.
We, we can enlarge the sidewalk, though, out into the street, which will accomplish the tip-down area that they need.
I mean, Highland Street has, is ADA compliant supposedly, and there's no bumpouts on Highland Street, and no lights there.
I think they were installed many years ago before some of this came into play. We, we can look at options of presenting them, but I don't think it's his need is just not doing anything there that changes the curb cuts right now. And the other challenge is by narrowing it down, or the other safety feature, by narrowing it down to one travel lane, if someone is crossing, that's the width of the road where that one car stops. If you try to still leave it two lanes, you certainly run the risk of the first car stopping and someone coming by in a secondary lane and not realizing there's a pedestrian in the crosswalk, and you create that challenge as well.
Doesn't the, whether you got the reverse angle parking, that yellow line comes across there, I mean, that white line.
It doesn't turn into two lanes until after that proposed bumpout.
There's one lane of traffic there.
Right, and that's what we want to do, sort of do a modified bumpout that would allow a second car to squeeze through there and have two travel lanes rather than the one we've narrowed it down to. That would be the appropriate width we want so that you couldn't have cars side by side going through there.
One, one observation that I'd like to make, personal experience, is, recent personal experience, is that, and I can't remember whether this was suggested at the last meeting or not, but whatever it is, we've got to do more than just paint something on the road. Because in adverse weather conditions, whether that be rain, or sleet, or snow, or whatever, you can't see those lines, even in broad daylight. I mean, they just disappear. So there's no way for somebody to know that that's, you know, without something obvious, there's no, whatever that obvious is, there's no way to know, you know, for example, there's no way to know that the second lane doesn't start until after that crosswalk.
Yes, there is, because there's cars parked there.
No, there's no cars parked past Water Street.
No, but.
Right up to it.
Right up to it, I mean, you would have to turn to the right and, and make a.
Can I make an?
Kirkly, and, and, just, it's been that way for years, and I mean.
And it's been dangerous for years.
It's been dangerous for years, and I visit at Beacon Street West on a fairly regular basis, and people there are very leery to go just to cross the street because it's dangerous. So I, I, I'm, I'm, I don't want to create a whole debate about this. I'd just say, put the bumpouts in, and put it to a vote, and let's rock and roll.
I looked up, and in the, just under twenty-four months, we've had thirteen pedestrian accidents in the city. Twenty-four months. Six of them in eighteen and seven of them in nineteen. Of the fourteen, thirteen, seven of them were unrelated to crosswalks. So there's six that had anything to do with a crosswalk at all, and, and that's over a two-year period. By way of comparison, in the month of October of this year, we had ten personal injury accidents. That's seventy-five percent of the injuries that we've had in two years in pedestrian accidents. I just think we're making a mountain out of a molehill. I, I understand the manager's argument. I think it can be the best of both. That is to say, the blinking yellow lights, and if some minimal amount of, of, of bumpout needs to be added in order to see to it that the ADA compliance is there, but to put a huge bumpout, just, I'm, I'm with Councilor Hamel. I'm, I'm going to vote against that.
All right, anyone else want to weigh in? No? Okay, we ready to vote? All right, so we have a motion, it's been made and seconded, to, to amend the city's plans for dealing with bumpouts. Is it just Beacon Street West or both?
It's just Beacon West.
Just Beacon West at this point in time. To amend the, the plan to construct bumpouts on Beacon Street West and instead to install flashing yellow pedestrian lights, correct?
Can, can we add to that that ADA compliance?
ADA compliant.
Assuring ADA compliance.
Got that, Madam Clerk?
I do.
Okay, thank you. All right, we ready to vote? All those in favor, please raise a hand. All those opposed, please raise a hand. We have four votes yes, two votes no, the motion carries.
Could, could we bring back to council the rendering of what that's going to look like ADA, so you can visualize it before we start or anything?
Absolutely.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. We are on to the ever-popular council comments. All right, Councilor Cheney does not disappoint.
It's a short week.
It's too late to worry about it now. I was hoping I could ask the manager to get the council a, an update on the status of the radio project that we started now almost a year ago.
Yes, I'm happy to do that. So this is for the communication system that was approved in a CIP a year or so ago for police radio communications and piggybacking for fire and potential space in the system for public works in the future. So the big area that we didn't have a, a space of operations, antenna, that and equipment type of stuff, was in the weirs. And it's the water tank on, on top of the hill that is the place where it needs to go. When that water tank was constructed, and I'm going to paraphrase here, and somebody can jump in because it was before my time, it was a requirement of that development, it was built for it. The language of the contract said that the water department had the right to mount any equipment they needed for their operations there, but it didn't leave any openings for other city operations to be mounted there. So that's been the biggest holdup, is going through and working with this outside company who owns the tank rights, basically, to put any type of antenna or other equipment up there. Going through their legal, having our legal review discuss and negotiate a rate that they would be charging us, and going back and forth quite a bit on that, which has been a challenge. Additionally, having to have an engineer go up and do a design so in order to determine that the weight of whatever equipment we're installing can be properly and safely mounted without damaging the tank. So that's been the biggest problem. I think we were ninety-eight percent of the way there. We've got space within the room that they were clearing out to put our equipment. Backup generator issue type of thing was spoken of. I think we're all set there. Oscev Mount Electric, my understanding is, has all of the actual hardware staged and ready to start going, and we are pushing like crazy because we know we're coming into colder weather to get this work done. So Captain Grayton has been doing a great job. You want to talk about email space? He, he nicely puts me on copy to every email he sends, and then I go around the loop with all of these corporate entities and their lawyers, so I need to cloud over my desk, too, to store all these emails, but he has been great. I think we are all but at the point where it's going to be an install.
Could, could we be advised when that's absolutely finished?
Anyone else?
Oh, I'm not done.
Oh, you're not done?
Oh, please.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
I'm trying to keep you here till eleven, and.
We have need for a non-public session, too.
Oh, Jesus, I'll move right along. I was going to bring up private roads, I'll leave that off to another time.
Thank you.
Two things I want, two last things I want to talk about. One is just to ask that at some future meeting, we perhaps could talk about the rules regarding the use of the banners, or the equipment to hang banners over the road on the boulevard and, and in the weirs. It's my understanding, there's a requirement that you can only use them for two weeks at a time, and I'd hope we could make some sort of an adjustment so as long as there wasn't anybody asking to use them, that they could keep their banners up for a longer period of time, but I'll leave that for another day. The last thing, I, I had a constituent call me, and, and I've subsequently heard a couple of other folks talk about, but, but the particular one was this person called me and said, her and her husband's absentee ballots never arrived. She called the city clerk, the city clerk checked, and they had in fact been taken over to the post office, and you correct me, please, Cheryl, if I say anything wrong, but took the absentee ballots to the post office to be delivered. They have, as of a week ago, not been delivered, and that concerns me. In my talks with Cheryl briefly about it, she told me of other instances where things have not arrived, that the city has mailed out. I know that return receipt or certified mail or whatever can be expensive, but we need to find some way to assure that nobody in this system, city, who asks for an absentee ballot doesn't get it. And I don't know what the solution is, but it's a comment I have that we need to think about and perhaps talk about at some time, at some point, how we can assure that these ballots get out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a council comment tonight, or more than one? Okay, as I stated earlier, we have need, councilors, for a non-public session tonight to discuss consideration of the acquisition, sale, or lease of real or personal property, which if discussed in public would likely benefit a party or parties whose interests are adverse to those of the general community. I will ask to go into non-public session, and we'll need to clear the room, obviously, and we'll note for the record that we do not expect to take any public action once we're back in public session tonight. So a motion being ordered to go into non-public session under RSA ninety-one A colon three, paragraph two, sub-paragraph D. Can I have that motion, please? Councilor Bounce, seconded by Councilor Haynes.
Yes.
We need a record vote on this, so I'd ask the clerk, please call the roll. Yes.
Councilor Cheney. Councilor Bounce.
Yes.
Councilwoman.
Yes.
Councilor Haynes.
Yes.
Councilor Hamel.
Yes.
Councilor Hosmer.
Yes. Yes. All right, we'll give a minute for Cheryl to get us out of, off TV.